...the city to permit, suffer, maintain existence of any nuisance upon any property under his control, and it gives the chief of police and the code enforcement officer are hereby authorized to abate any such nuisance. So now we're taking that legislation out of the state, defining it down in the city code. Next slide, please. Here is how we define public nuisances. It shall be unlawful for any person to commit a public nuisance, and anything that is interest to public health, safety, morals, or welfare, and anything that interferes with the exercise and enjoyment of public rights, including the right to use public property. This is our code as to how we define public nuisances. And if we go to the next slide, this is the state law which you see it mirrors, we mirror the state law as to how to define a public nuisance. And so, within this, we have the ability to enforce the public nuisances right now within our current code and the state law. I think the state law goes a little farther, and it defines out that anybody that commits a public nuisance, it is a petty misdemeanor, and that's how we get charged within that public nuisance. So, next slide, please. Section sixteen dash eleven, this is our city code concerning dwellings unfit for human habitation. And you can see that we have six different criteria within that that define whether a property is unfit for human habitation. And it is not limited to these, but these are the primary ones that we've identified out. So unfit due to dilapidation, defects, increasing risk of fire accidents and other calamities, lack of ventilation, light, sanitary facilities, uncleanliness, dilapidation, or structural defects. And what we're trying to do with this chronic nuisance premise is, of course, define that a little bit farther. What do we determine within these rules and these laws? It can also be, I think, the next section there, which are otherwise unsafe or unsanitary to the occupants of the dwelling, or the occupants of the neighboring dwellings, or other residents and municipalities. So, understand that our nuisance ordinance is very broad right now as to how we, what we can define. And then, of course, the last statement is on the blighting of a neighborhood, which we, I think that's what we're trying to address with where we're going. Next slide, please. And so, from here, we'll just go ahead and jump over into Mr. Morris's conversation on the general thing. This is what, this is our statement for when we discuss it in the city council meeting. But, I don't think that's working. Slide. All right. Criminal intent, the primary intents of this ordinance includes, please, creating a new means of designating nuisance properties. So, code enforcement has another tool for the enforcement of these laws. Okay, next. The intent is to not punish, but to correct specific issues that are occurring on that particular location. See? Nuisance properties are defined in this ordinance as those places that have three or more documented nuisance activities occurring on a premise within a twelve-month period. D. And nuisance activities are those that are defined in either Chapter Ten Criminal Offenses or Chapter Sixteen Nuisances. Next page. Sir?
Is that microphone actually working? Because I'm getting impression it's not. It's just...
It's working. Are you sure the volume is working?
Why don't you do that a little bit? Because I'm not getting any impression that this is being... I'm sorry, Mr. Morris.
No problem. I'll talk louder.
That might not be a bad idea. Go ahead.
Next. Primary, okay. The primary intent was to be able to contact the property, having a means to contact the property owner, not just the leasers, about discussing, putting together an abatement plan to take care of what, ways of resolving any outstanding issues. Next. This ordinance doesn't create any new violations, stated before. It only changes who we could be contacting for, at these locations, from the tenant to the property owner to try to seek and resolve those problems. Next. Next. Okay, this has been through a number of committees. Most recently, Public Safety Committee recommended approval three zero on January fifteenth, twenty nineteen, subject to some additional revisions. Legal Committee also recommended approval by a vote of three zero on January thirty first. And City Council, obviously, in February voted to hold this special meeting, and will stand for any questions at this time. Just some pictures of some nice things that we deal with.
Hey, Counselor Roebuck.
Next.
Point of order, we did not vote to hold a special meeting. There was no vote taken to hold a special meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Morris.
I'm done. Just going through some, couple of pictures. And one more. And I think we're done.
Thank you. All right, we have some individuals that signed up to speak on this matter, and I'm going to go to the individuals who've signed up at this point, and then we will proceed with our normal discussion. Well, I really was trying to avoid a motion at this point because we're not taking final action. We're only going to discuss amendments. Actually, we, they could, think of this as a workshop on steroids. All right, I have signed up to speak on this matter, Mr. Bobby Maples, Mr. Riley Armstrong, and Mr. Gary Hartwick. Those are the three that have signed up. I'll ask the three individuals to come forward. Mr. Maples, if you'll speak first, and then Mr. Armstrong, if you'll find, behind him, and then Mr. Hartwick after that. We, there'll be a three-minute time limit, but understand if any of the counselors wishes to ask you follow-up questions on anything you raise, they may do so. But, go ahead and start with your name and your address. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Bobby Maples. I live at thirteen ten North Maple Street. I've lived over there for over twenty years, owned the property since nineteen eighty-four. Across the street over there, there's thirteen thirteen, thirteen fifteen, thirteen seventeen, and fourteen oh one. Three of those houses are owned by a man, Gifford. He owns slanky auto place here in town, the paint shop. For twenty years, I've been fighting this man about him being a slumlord and having all the drug houses over there. It's nothing but drug houses over there. I've had two dogs poisoned in the twenty years. I've had stuff stolen from my house. My house broken in, cleaned out three times over there in this neighborhood. I've had to put up six-foot fences around my property. They pushed my fence down and got over and broke into campers, and I just can't get him to do anything about it. Now, I noticed that you said that if there's a place that had anything that happened within a twelve-month period, if there was three offenses, that these houses should be something done to them. You could take all three of those houses, thirteen thirteen, fifteen, and seventeen, look in your books now, just within a two-week period, just two weeks now, just recently, there's been three people that been over there, they've come and raided the house. Two felons have been arrested, two have gone to jail. The next day, they're out, they're back over there, the house is opened again. They come back over there, it's the same thing. I have the, two weeks ago, sitting at my house, nine o'clock at night, I'm watching TV. All of a sudden, outside my door, somebody dumps a nine-millimeter, ten shots, right outside my window. Three shots hit my house, seven went who knows where. I have nothing to do with this. I talked to Gifford about it. He came by, he saw me the next day and was laughing about it. Said, "I heard they scared you last night with the shooting over here." I've been dealing with this for twenty years. I'm out of ideas. I've tried everything. I've went to the police since nineteen eighty, I've been talking to them. I have one police chief here, said, "Go across the street and kill him so I don't have to." I have tried everything I can. I've offered to help him. I've tried to do anything I can to do this. He's got these tweaker girls that come over there. They had one girl came in the neighborhood, was there less than thirty days. I now have a house across the street from me that is fluorescent orange, because she had paint, and that's what she wanted to paint that house and live there. She lived there less than thirty days. I still have the house there. Those houses have been condemned. I've seen them condemned, and I've seen them gone back into service, and the next week, they've been okay to go back in there. I was a licensed general contractor in the state of New Mexico for over ten years in Albuquerque. I built homes, I repaired homes, remodeled homes. Those houses over there have not had the quality work done that they should have had done to them, yet they're back in service and letting vagrants go over there and live in them. They've lived there with no water, they've lived there and stole power from the electric company, they've stole water from the water company, trashed those houses, had fires. What do I do? I'm out of ideas, guys. I've tried everything I can within my power, and I, he still does it. There's nobody that's done anything to it. If they don't get meth at this house, they go to this one, this one, and then this one, and it's been like that forever. I was a young man when I first started this. I fought hands, fists, I broke arms, black eyes. I got the neighborhood straightened up. I'm an old guy now. I don't want to do it no more, and I shouldn't have to sit in my living room with a loaded pistol. I'm sorry, if you guys can help me now, I sure would appreciate it, because I'm at my wits' end, and it's not fair. They're neighborhood killers.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Armstrong, followed by Mr. Hartwick. And I apologize, I don't have a visible clock. Ms. Call will call it for me, because I can't read it from here. Okay? Go ahead and state your name and address, sir.
I'm Riley Armstrong, thirty-six, nineteen East Second. I'm a co-owner along with Starlin Nunes of IIR Property Management, and so, currently, we take care of about three hundred homes. There's another company here that probably takes care of a little bit more than that, and then there's some others that are smaller amounts. I, I think that probably what concerned me the most is who this targets, and so I've had some conversations, and after hearing Bobby talk about his issues, from a business standpoint, I would like to say, and also we have Carol Peyton, who is our property manager, we don't take care of properties that are described in the way of what Bobby's saying, and probably what led to this ordinance, and the nuisances involved. Unfortunately, I think that we kind of have a shotgun approach to some of these things, because we do have a lot of owners that are not in Roswell, maybe they're not even in the state, they're out of state. Some of them have multiple homes that they own. I can assure you that most of us, for the most part, do what we need to do to make sure that we have good homes that people can come in and live in and be a tenant. Unfortunately, what is being talked about are the issues that the police department has to deal with, and I, the city has taken an approach of condemning properties, correct? It's been done. It needs to happen more often. That's the only way you're going to cure this. It's not necessarily to put the burden on an owner or an agent, which is what we are, but you can identify those properties, why not condemn them? You can go to the owner and state, "You have X number of days to get this into a livable condition." One of the police officers this evening told me that when they go to a home where there's a nuisance involved, code enforcement comes as well. That ought to be right there, where it's said, "It isn't going to happen here anymore. Nobody's going to be here. We're shutting it down." These are places, in my mind, where none of us would probably live. So, I think that, while I do, and I stated this the last time I was here, that I do understand they do have rights of everything that's involved. These tenants do have rights, and you've got to understand that. Can I make one more comment real quick? If you want to do something, do something that condemns and allows you to evict. Okay? Thank you.
Still working on this button thing here. All right, Mr. Hartwick. Name and address, please.
Gary Hartwick, twenty-seven ten Sidney. I rent several houses here in other places, and I'd like to add some more. And rental is a big industry in Roswell. There are hundreds of houses that are rented. And we're fortunate, the Roswell, that people are willing to put up millions of dollars of their capital to put houses up for rent. It's not an easy business to make money at. You're pretty much lucky to cover your costs. One house that I rent in North Carolina, her son started beating her up, and I had to evict him. Evicting her took almost six months, lost her rent for six months, and eighty-five-hundred dollars of cash. It's not easy. One thing you could do, as a city, is to make evicting bad tenants an easy thing to do. It's really difficult, and the courts back tenants a lot. Tenants, as Riley said, tenants have rights. They have rights given to them by the federal government, by the state government, and by local governments. And judges tend, in my experience, to make, try not to make things difficult for tenants. It's really difficult. I would like to see the rental industry here in Roswell protected, because I'd like to add, my son and I would like to add more houses. This took me by surprise, your document, and I talked to several city counselors who haven't, who might have glanced at the document but haven't read it. It's not a very well-written document. These are my comments. There's almost a comment on every paragraph, and I also went through it with my law firm. So, I'm, as a landlord, am scared of this document. I mean, I'm not a police officer, I don't have the protections of a police officer. If I have a tenant that's beating up somebody, I can't walk in there. I have no protection to do so. And I don't want to be put, and I don't think most landlords want to be put in a situation that they're between the city and a tenant. If you, the city, have a problem, if you, the city, and the police and the courts have a problem with somebody, you need to deal with it, not try to make it my responsibility, because I don't have legal rights to do so, and I don't have the powers and protection to do so. And that goes with most of these things. There's no time to go through all these comments. I'm happy to give them to whoever might look at it. This could be rewritten much better. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Counselors, at this point, go forward with a discussion by whomever wishes to talk on this matter. Counselor Sanchez. Don't be bashful about making hand signals, so I can... I have Sanchez, Roebuck.
I just wanted to...
Okay, I'm just going down, I'll go down the line. Okay.
All right. I just wanted to know if Mr. Armstrong had some more comments on what he was wanting to say. I don't know if he finished or not.
Some of my additional comments, and I've had some discussions with Mr. Hartwick on this, and I think that where the real rubs, so to speak, is going to be, is that these owners, whether the actual owner or the agent, we still have to abide by the laws for every tenant, as was said, their laws. And I will tell you that probably ninety-five percent, maybe even higher, of owners that own these homes, they're leased out, they probably have pretty good homes. They're all over town. There's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe a thousand to twelve-hundred homes that I would be aware of, and there's some individuals that own more than one, some own maybe as many as twenty or thirty. It's a business. You have to view it as a business. The right property owner will look at it as a business, and they'll take care of those homes. But, I think an issue is, because an owner doesn't have a lot of control, you know, you can have somebody that comes in, sits down with you, you think they're great people, they become the tenant, we become the agent, and after a couple of months, there's some things that happen and develop, and then we've got to take care of that. And we do take care of it. But I'm not so sure that the owner is the one that needs to be entirely responsible. That owner can't be there twenty-four hours a day. We can't be there twenty-four hours a day. Does this suggest that the owners are fined? Does this suggest that the owners be fined?
There's no fine then.
Pardon me?
Counselor Sanchez has the floor. Counselor, you have the floor. This is your question, so I would ask you to respond.
What I'm just asking is, in general, Counselor Stubbs, Mr. Morris, you all were a part of this. Can the owners be fined?
They can. They can be given a ticket. I'm sorry.
Mr. Morris, why don't you go ahead and respond?
They can be given a...
Why don't you get up to the microphone, so the way it's going to be recorded? Why don't you walk through the steps that are involved with a violation under this ordinance?
Under this ordinance, basically, all the costs associated with all the services, service calls to this locale would be charged to the owner. Basically, they would pay for...
After what point, though? There's, you missed...
After the determination that they are a nuisance property.
But what also has...
And before that, the process is that there would be an attempt to contact the owner and work with the property owner to come up with an abatement plan first. That's what we're trying to do. We've said that all along, that we're trying to solve a problem, not fine the owner. That's not the first step at all. It's the last thing we want to do. What we want to do is take care of the problem. So, the first step is to get ahold of the owner, come up with a plan on how to deal with that issue, implement that plan, and then see where it goes from there.
Okay. Mr., excuse me, Counselor Sanchez, you still have the floor. This is still your...
Go ahead, Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you. I, I've said this before, I understand the purpose. I'm not so sure about how clear this is going to be done. We've got a lot of good owners. If I told you who some owners are, and how many homes they own, and how good those homes are, you'd be shocked. But that's not the target. The target are people that are able to live in homes that none of us would live in, but yet, they should be condemned. And the only way you're going to get that message across to the type of owners that Bobby's talking about is if you take action to that. And so, I think that that needs to be put somewhere in this, that the city does have the ability to, through code enforcement, to go in and look at whether or not it's a habitable piece of property, and if it's not, and they don't bring it up to standards within thirty days, then it's condemned. That means that those tenants that are causing the problems that law enforcement has, it doesn't mean that they're going to go away, but they're not going to be there. And I, I think, while Gary didn't say this, but, you know, when we talk about the significant demands on the information that I have on police, fire, and EMS services, you know, you're going to get a lot of negative feedback on that, because that's what we pay taxes for. So, I understand the purpose. I just would ask that you give it a little bit more consideration. We don't want any bad properties. We don't want anybody to have to deal with what Bobby's dealing with. Bobby is saying, "It's happening. You all know it's happened. Why is it allowed to continue to occur?" And I'm not saying that Bobby and I, we're kind of on the same side. I mean, he just wants to live in comfort and peace, and I don't know how this is going to get it done. I'm not convinced of how it's going to get it done. I'll stand for any other questions. Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez, you still have the floor.
I yield.
Okay. Are you done, Counselor? No, okay, I'm sorry. Didn't hear that. Counselor Roebuck, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to say thank you to the mayor, who has sat down with me several times to discuss this, and as we've kind of worked through this, and has gone above and beyond to, to really try to make heads and tails of this, of this proposed ordinance. I am, first off, I'm a little disappointed. I've asked staff several times, and with ample time, to provide some numbers of what kinds of quantities of houses are we talking about. I asked the staff to provide numbers of what amount of money are we talking about that, that we would possibly be recovering with these fees, and this information has not been forthcoming. And I think my request was put in at least a week ago, probably more than that. And that was just the latest request in a long lines. I'm pretty sure I mentioned these issues the last two times this was discussed at council meetings, that it's really hard for us to make a decision on something like this, that's asking us to extend the power of the bureaucracy without really having a strong rationale, number-wise. And so, I am disappointed that we don't have that information in this meeting, from staff, who otherwise does a pretty good job most of the time. So, this proposed ordinance, we got, it has a lot of problems that I'm going to address. First of all, I know the whereas aren't legally important, but I think they are important as saying the why. As I'm looking at the whereas's in this ordinance, and I don't know who said earlier, but some of the counselors do read through these things very carefully. The whereas talks about, generates significant demands on public's safety services, and also whereas, looking for, the second one talks about getting reimbursement for the city's services. Now, every discussion we've had about this has not been about recovering cost. In fact, I haven't discussed with anybody who believes that we will recover any significant amount of money to pay for these services. I don't think that, or has not been explained to us how, what the budget impact would be on this. Yet, that is sort of the two big whereas in this existing document, which is not in line with, again, what's been being explained, in that we're looking for a new tool to deal with, to deal with problem properties. Something else to, going down into the Section One modifications, nuisance activities, it talks about the Chapter Ten and Chapter Sixteen issues, and the mayor, again, I really appreciate, he did some work in trying to figure out, because he knew that a lot of the counselors had problems with certain one of those, certain parts of those, whether they're fences or nuisances, being included in this, in this, in this type of ordinance. And yet, we don't have a list compiled by anybody, except for the one the mayor did, of, hey, we've worked with, we've talked to some of these counselors who expressed concerns with particular ones, and we've compiled a list of how we think this might be limited. Yet, that was clearly an issue with several counselors at the last meeting, that there are some nuisances that are in those things, that need to be, need to be pulled out, that there was no way the council's going to support, or some counselors would support this with complete, those two complete lists. I'm not going to get any of the specifics at this point. We'll see what other people have to say to that, but I do want, again, to the general, the general thing, there are no new rules here, and they can, all the existing rules can still be enforced. I am a little unclear, though, I did, is that, why can we not contact owners? Mr. Morris stated in his, in his presentation that we're not allowed to contact owners when... when one of these violations. Is that, is that correct or incorrect? Okay, so we can contact owners with the, with the existing, with the existing things? Okay, so, so that's not an issue then, with the existing, um, with the existing things? I don't see how this is going to help us enforce, um, the current existing, uh, these, these, this Section 10 and Section 16, these current existing lists that we have. If we already have them on the books, all this does is allow us to go to them and say, "Hey, let's create an abatement plan." Um, and I don't see what's preventing code enforcement from going to them and saying, "If that's the case, create an abatement plan." What's, what's, what's preventing them from doing that right now anyway? If that's all they're asking for permission for, that's fine, but then we, we can just say, "Okay, give us permission to do that." The other issue that I have with this is that while it's couched in this, um, it's couched in this sort of the whereas with the reimbursement and stuff like that, and we use the word fees in the, in the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, we're actually talking about fines. And I may not be against the letter of the law, but certainly it's against the spirit of the law to create any fines over $500, based on, I believe, state statute, which, which limits our ability in an ordinance to create a fine over $500. So certainly, there are times when we do charge fees to people, and that are above that, and there are certainly appropriate times, but in this case, I think that the, the reason we charge fees is like with the water, we charge fees because there's an expense that we're trying to recover, and, and part of that, and certainly, that makes sense as fees, but, but in this case, we're really trying to use that, that really, that fee as a fine. We're trying to use that as a stick to bring the owners into the, into the, uh, into the negotiating table. It's not really about using it as a fee. In that case, I think we're being disingenuous by calling it a fee, when really, it's a fine. It's something that we are using, and, and which, because I think is, is, is at least by the spirit of the law, outside of the, the state statutes, what, what our, what our authority is. Those things, those things being said, I really wanted to support this. I really want to help our staff. I know the staff's worked on this a long time, and I, I'm, I'm sad about it. I'm really sad that we're having a, a whole meeting dedicated to it, because it's not, it's nowhere near ready. It's not ready. We didn't have the, we don't have the proper information that, that, I know I've requested, maybe other councils have requested as well. Um, this is the third time that we've discussed this in full council. Now, part of that is on us, because we did put this through committees. Um, and maybe we should have asked harder questions, and we needed, we're going to have, the council needs to be introspective on that as well. But at this point, I don't see any need for this, this amendment, or, I'm sorry, this ordinance to enforce our current laws. I think that it's going to cause much more confusion, um, and I, I do sympathize with Bobby, and certainly, if I thought this would help you, I would pass it. But the reality is that in that situation, that person's not going to come to a negotiating table anyway. He's not going to, it's, it's just, it's just not going to work. We need to convict, condemn those properties. We need to use the existing laws we have and get after that. I'm really sorry that you've had to put up with that for that long. And as a new counselor, I want to say to you that I'm committed to helping citizens like you with these problems. That is not acceptable. Mayor, I yield.
Okay. Counselor Stubbs. I'm marching down the whole list. I'm going to go from one end to the other. Okay. Counselor Stubbs. Counselor Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that, um, what we've tried to do here is make an honest effort to clean up the ordinance, to identify the, the additional problems, to try to, um, avoid the embarrassment that we had with the apartment complex out at McGaffey and Sunset. I think that staff has done a good job. I think the committees have taken a close look at it. You know, 10 of us, we're not all going to agree, but I think this is a sincere and honest effort to try to make things better. I like the point that we're emphasizing that we want to be able to sit down with the owner and come up with a plan that will solve, solve the problem for all the parties. And, um, rental properties are a tough business, and, uh, the owners naturally want to have good tenants that take care of their properties. Occasionally, as Mr. Armstrong said, there are people that tend to trash out your property. But I think this is an effort and gives a little more authority to the city and our code enforcement people to make sure that the property is habitable, that it's not causing a problem for the neighborhood, and that the value of the property is not being destroyed by a tenant that really doesn't care. So even though this may be imperfect, I support it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Grant, Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't take credit for this data. The mayor and I, I kind of talked about this and, and with, uh, Mr. Maples' neighborhood, and, and the mayor and I were looking over some of this today, and he had pulled up some numbers of the times RPD has responded to those addresses. Just for the council's record, two of them were 28 times in five years, and one of them was 22. And they were all different calls, so they weren't one call to multiple addresses, they were all kind of different calls on there. So my kind of question is just to walk through this of understanding, I think, just like with all the comments made, everyone almost agrees with kind of a little bit of the, the concept of trying to do something and help code enforcement out, but I think most of us agree that we're not really certain how this is going, how this is going to work to help. So I, I don't know if, if, if the, the police department or, or Mr. Morris could answer, like in this scenario where we have this many calls, you know, last year alone, we're talking about almost 30 calls with, at three homes right next to each other. What tool do we not have right now to correct some of those issues?
Actually, all we can do is go after the people that are causing the problems, not the owner who has direct control of those properties. So basically, the citations go out to the people that are involved, that are causing those issues that we can identify. So it's the, basically, the leases, and, and they're the ones that are being basically cited, if they're going to be cited.
But on the code, on the, on the code enforcement side, they're not cited, the property owner is cited.
It's, Bill.
I've owned rental properties before. It's, they don't get cited, the owner gets cited.
We do cite them, Counselor.
For, for weeds and things like that?
We notify the owner of the property. You cannot cite an owner that does not reside in Chavis County. So, um, we do not cite owners...
Mr. Bartlett, why don't you go ahead and come on up, so we can get the record, so the, this can go on the recording. I'm sorry.
Now, is that a, a city deal, or, or what?
Well, well, sir, it's, you're talking about misdemeanor offenses, and so nobody will extradite for weeds, junk, trash, things like that. And, and a lot of these places are, you know, we have a manager on site, but you cannot cite the manager and the property owners in California. Can't cite the property owner in California. So a lot of times, we're able to cite those tenants, because they're obviously the ones causing the problem. But we do notify the owners, as well as the tenants, and let, so the owners know what's going on with their property.
So if someone gets cited for weeds, or, or the vehicle thing, that's the tenant that gets cited?
Yes, sir.
How do you know who the tenant is? Especially if the water, if the water bill's in the...
Water bill, um, we run license plates to tie them to the property, and a lot of times, it's personal contact as well.
But if it's, all right, so if the water bill, like it is on a lot of them, or in the owner's name, or some of them, so how do you, how do you do that?
Well, sir, in order to cite them in the court, we have to have verifiable two, two sources that we use, whether it is the water bill and a license plate, whether it's personal contact and the water bill, um, you know, we have, to get it into court, we have to be able to verify two times that they are tied to that property, and they're the ones responsible. And I, I'll be honest, probably nine times out of 10, we have direct owner con, or tenant contact. So that's, that's usually, you know, sometimes they're cited on-site, sometimes the criminal complaints filed if they're not cooperative.
Okay. And then, so my point being is, it's, it's the tenants that are doing this activity, or ti, I know typically response, when you rent a home or whatever, you're responsible for those items, and usually, these violations are the tenant's fault, not the owner's fault.
The majority of the times, yes, sir.
Okay, so with this situation, we're going to make contact and try to sit down with the owners with this proposed ordinance, correct? We already have, with these properties like we're talking about, now, I know in this situation, I believe the owner is local, but that, that's, that's the issue. How are we, how are we going to force them to come in and meet with us?
Because if the, there is no abatement plan, there's, there's always further citations that, that we can do.
But we can do that anyways.
We could do that anyway, but again, we're trying to get to the owner, and it's really, that's all it is. It's really a, a notice process. That's what we're trying to get to.
But that's where I'm a little confused on that, because I've owned property that's not in Chavis County, and I got notified on any of those issues that came up by the city code enforcement.
But were you responsible in those other places, directly?
What do you mean?
If you got a notice, was, were you responsible directly? Were, was that code enforcement operation going to come after you? Or were they going to...
My name was on the letter.
But who was going to be going to their municipal court, is my question.
Okay. And, and I don't, I don't recall in that situation. Obviously, as the property owner took care of the situation, but, um, I think that's just a little bit of the muddy waters here of how this is really going to work and help with, I mean, a responsible property owner, like, like probably you guys deal with, Mr. Armstrong, it, this isn't going to really do anything. I mean, you're, 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 you don't, you're not managing properties like this anyways.
We turn back properties to like what are being destroyed.
Right. So you're talking about an absent owner, or an owner that just doesn't care, that's not going to, if they're not willing enough to make the place habitable anyways, they're not coming in to talk to us about it.
And it can be that, that's not, the structure isn't, is still habitable, it's just got junk and all the other stuff around it. It still has problems. Uh, we're not talking about properties that we'd like to squish every, every time. But just, just for some numbers, we did finally get some numbers. Counselor Roebuck, if I could, as a member of the council?
Go ahead.
Uh, the plea, and it takes a while, because the systems aren't designed to do this, but the police determined that last year, out of 70,000 annual calls, uh, they had around 1,300 calls that were for locations with three or more violations, between three and four violations. Now, when it goes to five, it drops down to 925 locations, so it's 2% at the best of the total call volume, but it's still a significant number of houses, 1,300 locations, had, would have met those standards under this, this code. Now, with respect to code enforcement, they couldn't do that, because their system is basically geared to generate letters on locations, uh, but we can, we do know that the top five are weeds at like 4,700, unsanitary premises is about 800, litter 740, inoperative vehicles 488, and public nuisances are, just generally speaking, are 273. So we know that those are the, obviously, letters are, the weeds is always a perennial issue in the summertime coming up. So that's the information that we can get. We tried to figure out how to do three or more addresses in the, in the code enforcement side. It just doesn't do it. We, we'd have all our guys still there. So that's the information we can get, too.
So, so a little bit more of walking through this scenario, like, like we have on Maple Say the owner doesn't respond, or, or say the owner does respond, and it, and it's on inoperable vehicles, it's things that the tenants are doing. And like was brought up, and I know, I've had clients deal with this, where it takes years to get tenants out because of the tenant's rights that they have. Then what? Even if you have a willing property owner, but the tenant has all the rights in our state, from my understanding of most of the situations I've heard of. Then what?
I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Then what?
Uh, I am not a rental lawyer.
Yes, please, Mr. Nev.
I mean, obviously, as far as this ordinance goes, okay, we say, we check the box and say, "All right, they're working with us." But then again, what is this, I mean, it doesn't do anything.
And I wanted to get involved in the conversation, because we have a lot of the tools in place, and so they're, they're there. Uh, we can go after the tenant, we can go after the owner of the property as well, too. I mean, we can go after whoever it is that has to resolve that. Now, I think really, why, where I wanted to have some of this conversation as well, too, is, is that our tools are fairly big tools. Our hammer is that if we can't get a property to be cleaned up, just like Town Plaza, we will remove the occupancy from that property. And that property will no longer be allowed to be occupied, and that's the only way that we can help the owner remove a tenant that's, that may be the problem. Also note that we're not just talking about rentals here either. We're talking about owner-occupied houses, because I think one of the poster children that we, we talked about a lot last year, 25 calls of service, five arrests, and it ended up with a big F-U on the side of the house to the neighbor. And so we're trying to, we're trying to deal with some of those, too, but really, we have those abilities, but I think the, the only way that we can correct some of these things is to remove the occupancy from the house if it, if, if they will not abide by the, the rules that we have. And I, I don't think we've ever taken that strong of a stance. We've always tried to work with people, bring them into the court and everything, and so I, I think that's the one thing that I wanted to make sure that we talked about, which is this, I appreciate everything that I'm hearing, because, uh, the, the stance is, is that we have to get our neighborhoods back, so.
And my feeling is, even in that scenario, if you have 25 calls of service, five arrests, and it's an owner-occupied, and they're willing to put F-U on the side of their house to their neighbor.
Right.
I don't really care about them talking to you. I want them to go talk to the judge.
Right.
Because I mean, I don't, I, I think it's just, it's, I don't know what we're going to accomplish.
Right.
And so even with Town Plaza, that was admitted when we talked about that, we kind of slipped up on that and letting it get that far. We have the laws on the books that we can crack down on that stuff where it's uninhabitable without even going inside. I've had that debate with people up here before. You walk around, and there's sewage leaking out all over the place. You don't have to even go in there to condemn it.
Right. And, and that's, and that is, I mean, and that's the valid point of what everybody is talking about as well, too. But note that one of the big things the staff is trying to do, and, and we're hearing it out of police and code enforcement, we're going to take a stronger stance. And that's what I, that's why I appreciate the conversation, because you're going to get the calls. When we take a stronger stance, then you're going to get the calls. And so I, part of this is to get you ready to have those conversations, because I don't think we can make the changes. I, I know I, I, I drive around a little bit with the mayor, and we look at neighborhoods. If we're going to make the, if we're going to bring some of these neighborhoods back, if we're going to help these individuals that take care of their properties, we're going to have to use bigger, bigger tools. And I, that's the big thing. I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of, so.
Well, I mean, that's, that's kind of all I had, is I just don't, I support, I want to, I want to use the bigger hammer where we need to, because I think those are the, the problem issues, like, like what Mr. Maples is having on Maple Street here with, with that. I don't think having a meeting or talking about it's going to do a whole lot.
Sure.
At, at that type of volume. Obviously, there's something wrong.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Is, is my opinion. So I, I don't support this as this is written. I know there might be some amendments, um, and I will go from there, but I can't support this.
All right. Thank you, Counselor, Counsel, Counselor Best. Counselors, be aware, I'm marching down the line. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
I'm, I'm kind of like Judy, I want to sit to the last, but I have, I would like to kudos to the managers and the owners that are renting houses. Been there, done that, absolutely hate it, don't ever want to do it again, so kudos to you. Mr. Hardwick, I agree with you. The tenants need to be held responsible before the owners unless they end up like Town Plaza, where they are just garbage. So, I yield.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Foster.
Well, this, my frustrations, we, we have changed some of this ordinance, and yet it's not reflected on what's been brought to us. In committee, I remember saying, uh, I'll say, "Section 1670 abatement plan. An owner receiving notice pursuant to this section shall meet with the city or his designee." We specifically changed it in legal and said it would be contact the city manager or his designee. And I do believe we changed the five days to 10 days. But, uh, but this is still reflecting the old. Those type things bother me, because if we've changed stuff, and it doesn't reflect what we've already done, how do we trust that when going forward, things are going to be done right? And, Mr. Nev, I know you're aware, but twice it's been brought on our screen that in public safety, that it passed at 3-0. I was against it in public safety. I was against it in public safety. It was a two-one vote that passed it on. And this has been twice that we've been shown it, the same thing. Um, those type things bother me because if we can't trust the little things, now we're going to create an ordinance that inflicts some hardships on our owners, some on our tenants. And and um, how do we trust that that's going to be, you know,
Sure.
reflected reflected to them? Um, one of the questions I have, the this, um, Mr. Bartlett, you said that we can't we can't write our citations to out of state owners or that we just can't enforce.
We do not, sir. We we do not. I don't I don't believe, um, I don't know how they would even get served. I know in Chavis County, when we fill out a criminal complaint, the sheriff serve. California, we we have never cited anyone out of Chavis County.
Well, because I I do believe, I mean, I don't know. Mr. Holloman, do you know if we could cite someone that's out of state?
Is that on? We do have the ability, I mean, like Mr. Bartlett said, we could cite them. The big problem is once you cite them, you have to serve them. And we've always had issues serving a municipal court complaint out of state. Yes, it, I mean, technically, it could be done, but I don't know that it's worth four or five hundred dollars per person to hire a process server out of state.
Well, my my whole question is if if we can cite them, I know enforcement's the problem, but lot of owners and probably the owners that we're not dealing with here would care that there's something on their record and would probably pay it. But the ones that we're having to deal with may not care. Um, but still, going through the motions, if we can't go through the motions. I mean, because first of all, then we're talking about we're treating owners differently just because of where they live. That doesn't make sense to me. If you're a Chavis County owner, why are you treated different than if you're a San Diego owner? That's not, that's not what our constitution's for. So we should treat people the same. Maybe our ability to enforce it may be different just because of location. But a San Diego owner shouldn't be the same as a a Chavis County owner. In fact, I think we should treat our Chavis County owners nicer than, you know, but maybe not. So that's an equitable thing that I have a problem with. Can we condemn a house because of weeds and junk?
Sir, only the building official has the authority to condemn a house. We do not have that in our ordinance. You know, a lot of times the building official will work in conduct conjunction with code enforcement and the police department to get that house condemned. But no, weeds and junk is not, it it could be a perfect house structurally, um, not dangerous. The building official will not condemn a house like that. In an incident like that, if they are, if we're able to get them into court, we get them into court and put it in the judge's hands. If it is a vacant property, then of course, as you all know, it it goes through resolution. Um, and and then you give us the approval to abate that nuisance. The problem is with the properties that we're talking about now, it's not a matter of of the officers just responding one time and sending a letter. After ten days, they follow up on that complaint and then it goes one of two ways. Not only do they notify the owner and the tenant, it either goes through the court system, in which case, um, the judge may give that tenant or homeowner, you know, ample time, what whatever he decides to get that taken care of. He'll he will call the officers out over and over again to check that property, see if they're making progress. Same with resolution. If we if we put it to you through resolution, we have exhausted every other avenue by the time it gets to you. Once you give us that authority, it's not only checked before resolution, it's checked after we mail the resolution letter to the owner again, try to get compliance. Um, then it's it's bid out. Then we have to go back, recheck it again, make sure the contractor did the work correctly before we pay them. So you're amplifying man hours over and over again. Multiply one complaint times three times a year for one property. And I mean, that's the kind of man hours you're putting into someone who, for whatever reason, just isn't interested in any kind of long-term compliance.
And I understand and and we, I mean, we want to fix it. I'm just curious to see how this will actually be applied. I mean, I've sat up here and we've passed ordinances to fix things. I mean, it's against the law to in ordinance in our city to curb vehicles and put for sale signs in your vehicles. I can drive by Sears, the old Sears parking lot right now, and I see plenty of vehicles that are parked there without permits from us. So I mean, I I don't I'm don't want to pass one more ordinance that just sits by sits on the side or pass something that hurts our landlords more than it helps them. And and that's where I'm still at the point where I don't feel comfortable with this. Thanks. I yield.
I have Counselor Peterson, then I'm going to go Counselor Moore and Orpesa. Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to the staff. Did a great job on on this ordinance. Needs a little tweaking, but for the most part, I support it. It gives code enforcement some good tools that they don't have right now. What this ordinance does, it it forces the bad owners to do something. You know, Mr. Maples has to go through a lot because of a bad owner. Most owners are pretty good. But it's the bad ones that we're looking for. And I had a question. Um, do we have a like, uh, do they have to have a business license to have a rental?
This business license for rental?
Yeah, an apartment complex, uh, yes. Right now, we're in the process of having the rental registration, which would include private owners in that, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
And I know our attorney is looking into that a little bit farther because I think there's a a limitation on how many properties actually constitute being in a commercial type business. Um, or if it's just, you know, a family home that has been turned into a rental. And so I think we're looking more deeper into that.
Okay, thank you. If we had a, if we force these forced them to get a business license to have their rental, I think we would have more, would be able to get a more, you know, with the current laws that we have. But a- as it is written, you know, we did change some things which which I was glad we changed. But, you know, if we could come up with a maybe modify it just a little bit, I think it'll be good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Moore.
I think I have more question than answers because I had a question. So how would this particular uh, ordinance would help Mr. Maples? Is that your name? How would what we're doing now, he's what he his the table there around him are the ones we're would be targeting, right? So how would this particular ordinance help him in his current situation right now, today?
How does that help that situation?
Counselor, uh, it would help by trying to get to the actual owner and requiring the owner to try to do some things uh, that would help rectify that situation. If not, then we go to a another citation and try to go as it just it's another avenue. Right now, we can notify the owner. The owner, as Mr. Maples indicated, laughed at him because he knows that he can cite the the people in the house all the time, all day long. That doesn't affect him as long as he gets a rent. So we would be talking directly to him. If not, then we go to court.
And so could you do that without this ordinance? Could you do the very same thing from all the police calls on? Could you do that very same thing without adding this stuff to this order?
Um, at this point, no, because we basically are holding the tenants responsible, not the owners.
And so by this, by giving it a name nuisance, is just that what strengthens the ability to do it, is that?
It gives it puts the that that location to another class and lets us do what's outlined in the in in the ordinance, trying to get them to rectify the problem. Trying to get it taken care of. If not, then we go to Plan D.
And someone mentioned something about being able to evict. Is there any in our where we are that we can add? And I see that he's already shaking his head. No. About adding the evicting process to any of this, since that's the only way that you would be able to help Mr. Sorry, Mr. Maples, I'm sorry, sir.
The only power that the city has over controlling the occupancy of a building is whether or not it's fit for habitation. So the building inspector would have to revoke the occupancy. Red tag, condemn, red tag. Uh, the other power that we would have is if a building has been condemned, they are then prohibited from being in the property. Uh, but all of that has to relate to the structure of the building and doesn't have to relate to any activity within it.
That's my only question for now. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Orpesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I also have a a problem with the language on the whereas. Because again, as as Mr. Riley Armstrong pointed out, you know, that's what the the community pays taxes for, to to hire the services to provide to our community. So that's number one. I I do have a problem with with the wherases that are noted here. The other problem that I have is that this one is is focusing, i- in my opinion, about ninety-nine percent on 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 the owners. I I don't think that even even if you are able to contact an owner, I I don't think or at least I didn't see anything in here that that would force an owner to come forward to talk to the city. And 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 even if you send them to court, you know, I I don't know how many times we've heard the the police department share their concerns. They 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 give tickets, they they send people to court and 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 the courts will let them go free of with without any penalty whatsoever. So it's really up to the judge to determine what what really is going to 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 happen in in a lot of instances. And and this one, e- even though it it doesn't uh, address uh, the situation that uh, Mr. Maples uh, talked about. You know, and even if it did, a- again, it's it's not up to the city council. Because if if these individuals get sent to court, the the judge is the one that's going to determine what's going to happen. And even e- even Mr. Maples has indicated that they have gone, they've gone to court. The 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 next day, they're out there again at the same house. So I I think you have to have stronger language than what we have here. And 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 I think we're mixing up two situations. You know, weeds, a nuisance, as as far as weeds are concerned or 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 a property is one thing. A nuisance, when you deal with with domestic violence and and so forth, that's that's a different thing. And and I think you have to deal with them in a in a separate in in a separate manner. And 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 I I think that the property owners to some degree can do something. But if you don't have a property owner that lives in town, I mean, there really isn't much that you can do, i- if from what I hear. And if you have a a property owner, and let me give you a scenario, that you have a property owner rents a home, three months later, you get a call, domestic violence or whatever. And that 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 tenant moves out. It gets rented again within the next two two months, let's say. And you get a call again. So as far as the house is concerned, that's your second call. And let's say that that those tenants move out. And here comes the third one. And before the twelve months are up, you've got three tenants already, each one with a with a call to that house, whether it be whether it be fire department, police department, code enforcement, whatever it may be. But yet you
Chief. You're going to be left. All right.
So you've got you've got a situation where a a a property owner is trying to do right. And it's renting a house with three different tenants and all three different tenants have had issues, whether it be weeds, whatever the case may be. So when you bring them in for for to talk to the owner, obviously, he has done everything that 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 he can do in order to justify or to correct the situation. And according to this one, you would try to bring in the tenant as well, if at all possible. In this situation, I don't think you're going to bring in three tenants. And so that that's the problem that I see with this one. And and the other one, I remember uh, sitting here and listening to a uh, an individual on a wheelchair that would it seemed to be disabled, that his mobile home caught fire. And he wasn't the owner. It was a bank. And so you have those situations as well. So the the lien holder, for all intended purposes, is really the owner, i- if I'm if I'm if I'm not mistaken. And so you have to deal with those situations as well because I don't think a representative from the bank is going to come. Uh, unless I'm mistaken, Mr. Mr. Holloman.
I mean, generally, in that situation, the bank would be the mortgagee mortgageor. Um, and the person who is listed as the owner, like for the property records, is going to be the person who purchased it. Um, but a mobile home would be a a different situation because it could they might not be the owner of the mobile home, but they might be the owner of the land, and the owner of the land might not be the person who's necessarily residing in the mobile home. So that to your point, that would be a complicated situation.
So I I I have some some concerns with the language here as well. And and I'm, to be honest, I thought we were going to come in here and discuss this uh, ordinance, make make amendments, take action. But as it turned out, it we're not going to do that. So it is pretty much a workshop than rather than a meeting, a council meeting, so. Again, I I do have some concerns with with the language and and how it's going to be enforced. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, before I go to Counselor Stubbs, I'm let me interject here. Uh, I am responsible for Mr. Maples being here. Mr. Maples came to see me last week personally and shared with me personally his experiences with the property owner responsible for the properties across the street. And the myriad number of tenants that have come and gone over and over again. The one factor that remained unchanged is the property owner. over again. The one factor that remained unchanged is the property owner. The structures, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bartlett can correct me, are not structurally deficient to the point that they can be condemned and demolished. But the conduct of the individuals that the landlord has allowed to live there is so egregious that it renders his neighborhood unlivable. And in my experience, and Captain Taylor here can perhaps correct me, I know of no other mechanism to help Mr. Maples. You can arrest the individuals in the houses over and over again. And apparently, they've done that on a number of occasions. But if the landlord continues to rent to the same type of individuals, or the same characters, the neighborhood continues to degrade. This gentleman here is frustrated. And I fear that his frustration will drive him to unreasonable actions. His behavior tonight was over the top. But I understand it. We have an obligation to try to serve the individuals like Mr. Maples. And I respect Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Hartwick. But if they are legitimate businessmen, which they are, they will not be renting to a class of individuals who will destroy a neighborhood like what has happened to Mr. Maples. We can turn our back on Mr. Maples, or we can step up and try to address this. I have proposed some changes, informally. I do not have the authority to make an amendment. I am the presiding officer. One of the things I wish was in this was the fact that search warrant executions would be triggering events. If Captain Taylor goes out there over and over again to do search warrants at a house, it is an indication there is a serious problem. If the FBI, DEA, or other agencies do it as well, that's also an indication of a serious problem. Those property owners who maintain those types of locations should be held accountable. And I would refer you all to Section seventeen-ten, Paragraph B, starting with the second sentence. "The city working with the individual will make every effort to consider the context of the nuisance activity and make reasonable efforts to determine the extent of the property owner's liability in contributing to the activity and shall not," shall, not, seek administrative cost under Section sixteen-twenty, where an owner is not liable for the nuisance activity. We are not going to unfairly penalize owners when they do not have a responsibility, under the way this ordinance is written now. So, I apologize for the inclusion of my comments, but I felt it necessary because of Mr. Maples' comments. And if it hadn't been for me, Mr. Maples probably would not have been here. I apologize for the disruption and interruption. Counselor Stubbs, you wanted to go later. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're always more articulate than I, and I hate that. I just wanted to sort of sum up a few things before I state what I'm going to. And that is that, first of all, the chapters of our city code that we're referring to in Chapter ten and sixteen are city code. And these are only, what's the word I want? Punishable, I guess, as misdemeanors. These are not any of the offenses that the state or Fed impose upon us. For example, domestic violence. That's not a misdemeanor kind of offense. So, we're not talking, go ahead.
We actually have matter against a household member. It is ten dash four in the municipal code.
Okay, it's right here. Okay. But I think what my point is, is that we're not looking at offenses that are considered felonies. We're looking at offenses, please tell me, guys, is that correct, that are pretty much punishable as, and listed as misdemeanors. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So, that's one thing that I think needed to be clarified. I think the other thing is that a lot of process that we have to follow is, again, dictated by state statute when it comes to being able to condemn, or I don't think we use the word evict, but to condemn or tear down property. A lot of that timeline and process is dictated by statute, again, not leaving us a lot of opportunity. And then, when we finally do something like that, it's going to cost us money to do it. It costs the city to do it. So, just again, something else that I'd kind of like to point out, I think what you've said about search warrants is very interesting. Again, if that's some of our local, locally imposed, I can't talk, locally imposed option that our local PD are doing, I agree with you. That'd be great to be able to include that, but I don't know if we could. Again, I just don't know the federal and the state processes of search warrants.
Counselor, if I may, what I meant by that is, in the section, first section, we're defining, Section sixteen dash fifty, nuisance activities, that would be, in my preference, how we would identify nuisance activities would be a search warrant execution being a nuisance activity.
Sixteen dash what? I'm sorry.
First page.
This document?
That document.
Sixteen.
Dash fifty.
Okay.
Nuisance activity. That's what I was referring to.
Okay, good. So, that, okay. So, that, I don't know what else. Let me see. I have, again, some comments on, again, specific language, but I don't think I'm going to do that at this time. What I was going to do, and again, I have to ask if this is a proper thing to do. I wonder if we could take a scenario such as Mr. Maples, and have the police department, code enforcement, whoever would be involved, and walk through a situation as to what this would do, if this, or something similar to this at least were in place. If they had the option to create this abatement plan with the owner being involved, is that an appropriate request, Mr. Mayor?
I think so. Why don't we have Mr. Neb respond to that, since that involves cross departments, the PD and the code enforcement and all those?
I'll try to walk through a scenario for that. One of the things that, to keep it on the broad level at the moment here, is that we're trying to cross the criminal and the civil complaints. And where the PD is responding a lot to the criminal-type complaints out there, we're saying that just because they're responding to those criminal complaints, that there is a civil issue, which they're creating, somebody's creating a nuisance within the neighborhood. So, if you walk through exactly what is happening over here with Mr. Maples, is that based upon those calls of service, then the city will look at that call volume, they will look at all of the conditions there, and this will address a little bit of what Counselor Pesa said as well, too. Just because there's three incidents or more that happen in a house, that house is not determined yet as a nuisance property. It is, there's a determination that'll go through the PD and code enforcement in order to determine if there's a nuisance. If there is a nuisance, that is determined. And so, in this case, we know that most of the problems with the Maple Street properties, they're, it's tenant-driven more than anything else. The houses are not structurally deficient. I just think that more than likely, the people that own the house should be doing a little better job of background checking their tenants. I mean, that would be helpful, too. But, so, we find that the tenants are in the issue there. So, our abatement of those nuisances will go toward the tenants with contact to the owner. If we don't get a good response out of those, the nuisance, then that's where we would actually go to the owner as well, and say, you need to help us get this done. Otherwise, then we're gonna have whatever the next steps are. So, in that case, we would, it'd be a two-pronged approach, more than likely, is that we would go after the tenants, try to get that abated that way, because that's where the problem started. But then, we'll also have to have that conversation with the owner. So, we bring them in for the abatement plan, to establish the abatement plan, because, you know, in a lot of cases, some of these out-of-state landlords, and we have a few of them, don't even understand that there was a problem with their property. I mean, that was the first thing out of Town Plaza, is that I didn't know my property had any problems. And we saw those pictures. But, so, we walked through that. So, the, it is, generally, what we're trying to do here is contact the individuals causing the problem to make sure that they are aware they're causing a problem. And so, that's where we would have that in there. I would say that using the owner as an example in this case, is that we really want to go heavier at the tenants, and softer at the owner for that type of an issue, unless the owner, which we're hearing some, what Mr. Maples was alluding to, was the owner doesn't really care. And then, we would go stronger at the owner as well, too, and put them under an abatement plan as well. And...
Because if I may interrupt, I have my own question. Every situation's going to be somewhat different. And to me, my thought on having an abatement plan is it does become individualized to a specific situation, and to the specifics of the people and the scenario that's involved. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that is fair. Because what we're trying to do is get to the resolution of that, and so that everybody can have their neighborhood back. So, everyone will be a case-by-case, and it will be dictated with that, very similar to what we do with our utility billing as well, too. I hate to digress with that, but we have over four hundred habitual offenders that don't pay their bill. That means all of us that do pay our bill are paying that additional price there. We will bring each one of them in and put them under a payment plan to bring them current. That's what we're meant to do. We don't want to shut anybody off. The same thing on the nuisance side, is that we treat everybody as they were not aware that they had a problem. So, that's our first contact, is that, did you know that you're not, you're in violation of this? And then, we walk it all the way through that process. And so, it does become very individualized. The timeline becomes very individualized. And I know that before I got here, we had the one house that burnt, or the mobile home that burned down, and we were going to condemn that. The owner came in, the city council saw to say, nope, we're not going to condemn this property. So, we began working with the owner to get that property fixed up. The challenge he had was, he has handicaps and everything, so he did not know, he was working through an advocate. And so, yeah, that'll all be individualized.
So, Mr. Mayor, again, I'm thinking, sometimes, I'm assuming, when the PD or code enforcement issue some kind of citation, they may not, at that level, have the opportunity to research the root of the problem, which is what I like to think we're trying to do with this abatement problem, is not just cite them on that level, is to get further down into the root of the problem. Does this sort of allow that? And am I correct in thinking that that doesn't always happen on a cursory citation?
The quick answer is yes. This allows for more communication and the ability to give that person an opportunity to fix it, fix the problem. And again, I mean, Mr. Maples is a good example of, those problems have been there for twenty years in his mind, however long they've been there. It may be the first time we've ever addressed it with the owner or the tenant. And so, we have to treat it as a new cause. The frustration that Mr. Maples has is that he's got twenty years of history that's been building up to get to the level of what you saw with his frustration.
So, again, in this particular ordinance, it would allow the abatement process, which is not out there currently as an option, and the abatement process would allow for more discussion and collaboration of all those involved. For example, the property owner typically is not involved when these citations are made. You're making it with the person, people who live in the house.
They haven't been. And again, I know that my answers differ a little bit from staff's as well, too, to a certain extent, because we do abatement plans right now with every nuisance that's out there, even the condemnations. If we get a condemnation, that building's not done yet. It's not demoed. So, there is another conversation that happens on top of that. I believe that we do abatement plans all the time. What this ordinance does is it focuses that attention and establishes parameters as to what the expectation is. Because right now, I could declare something a nuisance that you would not agree with. I could, you know, and Bill Bartlett could declare a nuisance that I don't agree with. And so, what we're trying to do is further define what we consider to be the most egregious nuisances out there. And I think that's the challenge. But we have the ability to, and we do, we work with everybody, because we really want to make sure that they have every opportunity to become a part of our neighborhoods, not against them. So...
But then again, Mr. Mayor, my last question is that you believe that this ordinance, putting this abatement process into place and causing this discussion to happen, could be a tool for Mr. Maples' situation?
Yes, it can. I believe it can. I, you know, and I agree with a lot of the other comments as well, too, because we have some of those abilities right now anyway. But this is a good tool to help staff understand exactly what those parameters are. And it would help Mr. Maples.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Mayor, I think just my closing would be just that, that this is something that's not on the books currently, that would help the city put something more in the toolbox, that would help fix some of the problems that neighbors are seeing within their neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else want to add? Okay, I have Counselor Sanchez, Roebuck, and Best.
I've got a question for Mr. Armstrong. On rental properties, what is the process of getting a renter out of your property? If you're renting to someone, what is the process? And how hard is it?
And I hope I answer this correctly. I'd like to ask Carol to come up. She's our property manager. And, go ahead and give them your name and address. Ma'am, state your name and an address.
My name is Carol Payton, eight one five East Albuquerque.
Okay.
So, in order for us to file eviction, we have to post a seven-day notice for them to get the problem resolved. After that seven days, if they have not, we go back. If the problem was not resolved, then we issue them a second seven-day notice in order for them to vacate the property. If they do not vacate the property at that point, then we file eviction, take the paperwork down to the courthouse, get a scheduled date, and go in front of a judge. And that could be for any violation, whether it's weeds, the yard, violation of the lease, domestic violence, anything that they, anything that violates the lease. We have to go through that process. So, it could take us anywhere from fourteen days to thirty days in order to get a tenant out of a home.
So, how long would the whole process be, you know, to evict someone?
Can be anywhere from fourteen to thirty days. Depends on when we can actually, it's fourteen days for sure before we can actually even file the eviction process. Yeah, or more.
The reason I ask is, there's a property in front of my house that it was rented out to some individuals. out to some individuals. Those individuals left and left the key to some other people. Well, the owners couldn't get those people out. And it took them about three months before they could get these people out. And what they did is when the people left, the owners went into the house and changed all the locks and that's how they got them out. So I know it's, once a renter is in there, it's difficult to, to get them out. So I don't know what the situation is with the owner with these houses where Mr. Maples is at, but it is difficult to get, to get them out. And, uh, in this ordinance, if we can't help someone like Mr. Maples, uh, right away when we pass that ordinance, then what is the purpose of it? What is the purpose of it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carol.
Okay.
And I haven't heard from staff, I've heard from Mr. Neb, but I haven't heard from staff, the ones that go out there on a daily basis and deal with this. I'd like to know how this ordinance would help them in this, in this situation. I, I want to hear from you guys.
Chief, you want to go ahead and respond to that?
Counselor and Mr. Mayor, um, well, first of all, I got to tell you, I've, I was a landlord, residential landlord for over 20 years, had eight units back east, and getting somebody out 14 days to 30 days would be a dream. Had somebody consume a year's worth of lease out of me. Had four bad tenants, the only ones I remember, out of the hundred I probably had. You remember the four bad ones. What I think this, this ordinance would do is, we, we as a, as a community are looking to improve the quality of life. Okay, I mean, that's, that's a sold deal. And by doing that, even as a police officer for my whole life, we can't arrest our way out of it. So enforcement isn't the way, so we've got to find the root problem. That's, that's why I wanted to talk. I was waiting over there to be invited up, but, um, this is a problem-solving tool. Okay? Because the issue isn't the good landlords, the good landlords who do a background check, who have somebody financially qualified to have the unit, so they take a deposit. We're not talking about those. We're talking about and we're targeting the indifferent landlords, the ones who don't care as long as they're getting a check in, as long as they get that first three-month check, because the prop, then they don't care what happens afterwards. And that indifference is what's causing misery and we could end up having a serious problem because property disputes and land disputes are some of the most volatile things we deal with and they come out of nowhere because all of a sudden somebody snaps. Um, we're aware of this gentleman here who's had 78 incidents, incidents across the street from him because he was here. But what about the other 1,300 properties at 2% where they have neighbors that are out of their minds as well? The, um, what we should keep in mind is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong because I'm talking from a northeast venue, there are three ways to get a tenant out. Either they abandon the property if you're lucky enough, um, provisions of the lease, they breach provisions of the lease, or they default. And a default is actually a violation of the provision of the lease as well, but most landlord-tenant courts want you to separate those two and only do one at a time. Technicalities to keep a deadbeat in. Anyways, a good landlord will love this because it adds beef to their lease. There, there's always a provision in a lease, correct me if I'm wrong again, for criminal acts. You won't commit criminal acts on their property. So this adds, adds a little more bite to it because it's an ordinance with the city as well as being a nuisance. With that in mind, the bad landlords will have two things to do when they get hit with an ordinance like this. They'll either tighten their game up and get better tenants and try and get these tenants out, or what they can do is they can pass the fine on to the tenant. If you damage property, you can go into the deductible or you, or they don't have the deductible at the end or whatever, and you say these are costs that were incurred by your tenancy, so now the tenant's responsible for it. Again, the bad tenant gets, gets handled, but the, the, the weak landlord is made accountable. If we don't do anything about this, the weak landlord can stay at a distance and keep collecting his rent, put different people and keep the run going and just, and the police department will do what it's supposed to do. But are we really getting the value for our tax dollar? When the, when the police office has to keep re-arresting the same people, re-going to the same residences, when you have the landlord who doesn't care? So, um, again, I mean, it's, it becomes a default provision or it's a violation for the eviction, to get the eviction, this adds beef to it. So it's a no-lose. We're already doing the job as it is now, you're just adding, you're, you're pushing the bad landlord to act, or you're giving more bite to a lease agreement. Most lease, leases will mirror state statute, they won't supersede state statute. Um, I believe that committing a crime is always going to be a problem. So, and again, this is to get those low-level tenants, to have the landlord accountable for those low-level tenants that they get. Because again, we'll deal with the felons, they'll be extracted from the property and hopefully put away for a while. But, um, that's just a, um, when I, when I saw this come through, I'm like, this is a no-brainer. But anyways, I'll field some questions if you'd like. I agree with it. Maybe we have to tweak some language. Maybe there should be a mediation period in there, which we already have, like a good landlord that, you know, comes across a bad tenant or the, or the good tenant has their adult child move in and that becomes the bad tenant. You know, and we have some provisions to deal with that, that's fine, we can play that game. But I think to disregard an opportunity to hold these, these rogue landlords accountable, I think is amiss.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I guess you, there's not any questions for you, so.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Bartlett would be the other side with enforcement.
All right. Thank you, counselors. I think something that hasn't, hasn't really been brought up is, um, Mr. Armstrong and his property manager, I wish I had 50,000 more just like him. Because nine times out of 10, I can pick up a call, talk to a property manager, and, and it gets taken care of, whether it's weeds, whether they get with their tenant, you know, for, for whatever. We're talking about landlords that might be related to the tenant, um, could be an aunt or an uncle. And they have, they have no interest in starting eviction proceedings or renting to maybe a better, better kind of clientele unless maybe there, there's repercussions. I mean, maybe if we start to, uh, financially hold them accountable, um, for visiting that particular property, you know, six, seven times that year, maybe they'll have some sort of incentive to straighten nephew out or, or what have you. Um, you know, and that, that's a lot, we're not, we're not talking about good, um, responsible property owners. Those aren't the ones that I have problems with. Those are the kind of people I can send a letter to California and they comply within the, the timeline or make other arrangements, hey, I need 30 days, whatever. That, that's not who we are targeting here. Um, this is for those landlords that, for whatever reason, just, just, uh, could care less, as long as they're getting their rent month after month after month.
Mr. Bartlett, with, um, maybe some language changes, do you think this would be something that would be effective?
I, I believe so, counselor. I, you know, like you hear it from Joe all the time, it's another tool for us. It's, it's another tool for us and it's certainly not gonna, it's certainly not gonna hurt. I, it's, it's not going to be abused. I mean, my, my officers have discretion and, uh, you know, they're, they're certainly, if, 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 if they're working well with an owner, just because maybe we had to send them one extra weed notice this year, um, you know, it, it's not something that we're going to go after and pursue this. Um, this is for the, you know, very small percentage and, and it can't hurt, counselor. I mean, that's, that's my honest opinion. It's one more, one more avenue for us. Um, what, what we have been doing with these owners, I can tell you now, is not working. Uh, simply tearing these houses down, I mean, it's, it's, it works, but it's, it's short-term. I would rather save some of those houses if we could get with these owners and, and, you know, like I said, if it takes fining them or, or whatever financially, uh, can't hurt. I mean, it's, we, it's, like, uh, Counselor Henderson says, it is a sincere attempt to make things better for the community.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
Thanks, sir.
You know, I'd, uh, in hearing everything, I do believe we do need to look at the language. We do need to sit down with the, the attorney and see what we can improve in, in this. Because, uh, you know, as I look at Mr. Maples, he's not the only one in this city that is having to deal with issues like this. There's places like this all over the city that are having to deal with this. And if we can have an ordinance that has, uh, a bite to it, it will cause someone to, to, uh, make changes, then that's what we need. Mr. Riley, I thank you for your input and Carol. Uh, we need to be able to communicate with each other and come together in putting the language that will help everybody, not just some, some people. Thank you, Mayor Ayew.
Thank you, sir. I have Counselor Robuck, Counselor Best, and Counselor Foster. Go ahead, Counselor Robuck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, as I've said in previous times when this has come up, I doubt, do not doubt the intentions and certainly I appreciate code enforcement and law enforcement, they do an excellent job. I've, I've, I haven't dealt with you personally, thankfully, but I know people who have on both sides who have complaints and have had to deal with you. And, and every time, um, I've been pleased with the, the way that our, our staff deals with it, enforces the law, but realizes they're working with humans and, and I do appreciate that. I, I, I agree with, with, with Counselor Sanchez that I would love to have something that had teeth in it, but this, to be completely honest, has no teeth. Um, the only teeth in this is something where, and we are being dishonest about it again because both of these, both of these, uh, officers just spoke to us, they said it has a fine. There is no fine in this. There is no fine in this, there's cost recovery in this. Now, if we're using cost recovery as a, as a fine, we need to say so, but this document is flawed in that, in that regard. If we are fining people, we have a limit of up to $500 to fine people. If we're trying to recover costs, that is a different, that's a different scenario. Now, we talked, uh, Counselor Stubbs said about, let's talk about a scenario and I'd love to get feedback on a scenario like this. So we have a scenario where you have domestic abuse in a household. I'm just thinking that's an easy one. No other problems with the house, other, otherwise the house is habitable, no code issues. And so that we have, let's just say we have 10, we have an abundance of, of callouts to it. So then we sit down with the property owner, um, who's not the tenant in this case, and say, let's make a, let's make a abatement plan. What options are we going to be able to give that property owner? Send, send your tenants to counseling? Are we going to tell the property owner to evict your, your, uh, what's that, what's that abatement plan going to look like? I would love to have something that we could give the code enforcement, um, to, to deal with this, but this isn't it. This is not going to do, this is, this is not going to do anything. We are, you, code enforcement already is working with people. I know they have that heart and that attitude, that's why they're bringing this. They're already working with whoever will work with them. Nothing prevents code enforcement from picking up the phone and calling any landowner or property owner and saying, hey, can we, can we talk about this? There's an issue there. Nothing prevents them from reaching out, um, to them, that I'm aware of. Um, and, and so in this, in, what we're trying to do here is, is we're trying to go round around, a roundabout way, and I would love the, uh, our, our, our counselor lawyer person's opinion on this, but effectively, would it not be better if we went into the chapter 16 and created a nuisance and described it as XYZ, so many whatever offenses that we are, we're trying to get to create a nuisance that then we can enforce? Because right now, I don't see how with it, even you would create an, an abatement plan. Uh, and, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there's a, if there's an idea out there how you would, how, how code enforcement would sit down with somebody and say, okay, you've had, we've called you out here four times for, 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 uh, drug, uh, uh, a drug offense or whatever, whatever, there's been three arrests on your property, whatever it's been. How would code enforcement create an abatement plan for that? And that's the example, that's, that's why I don't think we've thought this through all the way. Um, so I'm happy to, to vote for something that gives code enforcement more teeth, that lets them go out there, but this isn't it. And I, what I don't want to do is pass more stuff to say, I, I agree that if we pass this, it wouldn't hurt anything. Chances of this hurting anything is, is very minimal because you're right, it's the, the good landlords, it's not gonna, this is not particularly going to be a problem for them. But I don't want to be up here passing stuff that is meaningless and to think that we've solved the problem and we haven't. You know, I, I, I would, I think that we should kill this, I don't know if we can kill this, since there's no motion and I don't even know if we can, uh, uh, be based on what the, uh, based on what the, uh, the agenda said, because the agenda says, kind of signifies that we're not going to make, make, take a vote on it, but, um, and, and, and come back with, what are we really trying to do here? And let's figure out exactly, if we need to give them more teeth to deal with these property owners, let's give them that. But they, but they already have the ability to enter into agreement, uh, talk to owners, they already have that ability. And unless somebody can explain to me those two scenarios, how that might play out differently, what an abatement plan might look like, that would actually be enforceable, usable, um, then I, uh, I, I don't, I can't see where, where this is gonna, this is gonna help any. Um, uh, but again, we have to be real, and I'm going to say this, my last thing is that there is no fine in this. There is no penalty in this document. That is not how it's written. This document is written as a cost recovery document. And that's not, nobody's talked about one time about cost recovery, about that tonight. And so this, this is, whatever we're talking about, it sounds, what we're talking about sounds awesome. This isn't it. Let's do what we're talking about. Let's get them a tool that, that really works. Um, uh, but, uh, 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 counselor, um, can you answer the question? Can you, could you add something to that section 16 to declare some, can we, we make anything a nuisance, right? We can make it a nuisance if you get police called to your house five times in six months or whatever, correct?
Right. And, and I think that that's the intention of this and so if it's not clear, then that is where we do have more work.
But how, how does, how does this make it a nuisance?
It's not making each individual action a nuisance, it's making the combined, once something is combined, total of actions to be the nuisance.
So why don't we just put a, why don't we just add something as a nuisance into, into chapter 16 as opposed to this?
If it's in chapter 16 just under those terms, then it would just be a criminal penalty like you're talking about where it's the $500. So let's say we had section 1650.
Sure.
If you have five of the following above.
So what we're trying to do with this, again, we're trying to figure out a way to impose a larger penalty than the $500.
I would say that the, that is not the ultimate intention.
Sure. But to get that stick, that heavier stick, to where we can really kind of go after somebody because you're going to be billed for police visits, which I'm sure aren't cheap.
That, that still, I mean, I guess I still disagree with you. It, the intention is not to build a bigger penalty in there, it's to keep it within a certain realm. So, I, I mean, eve, if that was a concern of yours, I think that's something we could bill into, build into there. Um, the issue is that when you have a civil, and I think you've picked up on this, and I prefer the terms fees and fines. Fee is to recover your actual costs expended, that's a civil question. A criminal question is, we are trying to punish you regardless of how much damage you've charged or what we've expended in this, we're going to give you a fine, $500. But, uh, to your point, if that is a concern, I think that we could limit it to, you know, actual costs expended up to a certain amount that we want to impose on this. Um, but that is the underlying idea and I could see where...
So the only difference in this as opposed to adding to 16 is the fine at the end and maybe some process.
The abatement, the abatement plan and the process.
Sure. But again, there's nothing, there's nothing preventing staff from doing abatement plans right now on anything in 16.
That is true, except if they did an abatement plan right now, they wouldn't have any means of enforcing it, so they...
Well, if they, if you do an abatement plan and then they would say, if, here's our, here's our plan, let's fork this plan out, and then of course they don't do the abatement plan, then you, then you give them the penalty, you give them the fine.
They could cite them into court.
Which is effectively what this is, is what we're trying to do here is that if, the only way we're bringing these owners to the table is by saying there's going to be financial consequences if you don't come sit down with us. That, that is kind of what... That, that is kind of what I, what I've been hearing, is that, that that's the reason you have the financial piece on here, is to bring the owners to the table.
That I think is right.
And so in that way, it, it's just, it's just, how can we create a bigger stip than $500? In my opinion. I understand that there's not necessarily a legal answer to that. So, I, I want to give you guys something to deal with these problems, but, but I am, we, this is not it, and we shouldn't pass this because we don't, this is not the right tool. This won't do it. And, yeah, this, yeah, it just won't do it. Let's come up with something that will do it, and I'd love to support that. Thank you.
I have Counselor Best and Counselor Foster. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
Okay, I understand this is a crossover tool, and this is what we need. I kind of want a finish on the scenario for Mr. Maples. So now we have these houses that have been here 20 some years, we have crossing over with code enforcement, and we have crossing over with the police department. We need an abatement, like he's saying. Okay, so in the mind of Spankies, I believe that's the owner.
Slinky, slinky.
Slinky, Slinky, excuse me, Slinky. He's a business owner. He doesn't care how rundown the houses are, he's getting 500 bucks a month. Okay, so he does, he's not going to kick them out or anything like that. He's getting his 500 bucks. He doesn't care how many times the police officers go to the houses or whatever. He's still getting his 500 bucks, whatever. So we fine him. We fine the owner, and we fine the tenant. He's still going to get his 500 bucks, whether they're fined or not. He may have to spend 250 on a fine, but he's still going to get his 500 bucks. It's like the lady down on Lee and West Second that has the place across west of Pecos Winery and south of the Historical Society. She didn't want to sell the building. She's getting 500 bucks for two people, $1,000, 500 each, for people living right there on Second Street. One old man never even moves his van, never moves his van, and the lady, whoever is living next to him, has started pulling junk out of there. On the east side of that building, the roof has fallen in. So, I understand we've got a tool here, and we need to fine tune this tool so you gentlemen can work together. That's the biggest thing. I don't think fines are going to be it. I think maybe jail. That might be a little rougher, a little tougher. We do need more teeth in this. And let's add another scenario in here, HUD housing. Let's add HUD housing in here. Now you've got federal in on this scenario of weeds and everything else. How often do we come to HUD housing that we need to get rid of them? Mr. Bartlett, do we have HUD housing that we're constantly hammering on?
Come to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, I'm half deaf.
I understand. But how, how often do we have HUD housing coming up and fitting these scenarios where we need to, to abate them or anything like that? Because now you're moving into federal, and getting federal people out of these houses is a nightmare, because I dealt with it with Flexi in my house.
Right.
And it didn't matter how much they tore it up.
Yes, I don't want to misspeak, I don't have the numbers, but normally HUD housing, there's still an owner there that we can deal with, and, you know.
But I couldn't get them out.
Ma'am?
I couldn't get them out, because they were federally funded.
Oh, right, right.
I, I don't know how the management property gets along with it. But you can't get them out. They've got a contract. It doesn't matter what they do to your house. So, again, we're getting teeth, but are we getting enough teeth for the tool, for the tool that we're getting? Are we getting our money's worth?
If I may, Counselor, I just want to say one more thing. It's every violation, I mean, you've all read my letter, every violation is a separate violation. Meaning that if Bill Bartlett has an inoperable vehicle, and I send him a letter, and he, he complies, whether it's, you know, I have to take him to court or does it voluntarily, and then two weeks later, he brings in two inoperable vehicles, we have to start that process all over again. That's a whole separate violation. And so what we are trying to do with this is like Bill Moore said, we want to put them in another class. It's just, you know, I, I, if you're getting $500 a month, and you have to recoup the fire department, police department, code enforcement, $500 a month, that would get old for me pretty quick if I was a homeowner, a landlord. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's the last thing I wanted to say.
So if you have one vehicle, and he gets it tore, it turns over and, and starts, and then he brings in two more, he's just going to build on that?
Well, ma'am, once, once they have complied, let's say I send you a notice for weeds, once you mow those weeds, you're, you, you're new with us. If you have weeds two weeks later, we have to start it again. It doesn't matter if we're at your property once or 20 times. If you comply, it's a whole, it starts fresh. You start with the clean slate. We can't hold you accountable, where with this ordinance, we would be able to say, hey, you've had weeds 10 times this year.
So with this gentleman that walked out, we will be able to work on his neighbors within so many calls?
Well, ma'am, I, I believe so. I mean, if, I'm familiar with Mr. Maples and where he lives. And like I said, if this homeowner, I think it would help immediately. I mean, that, that's my personal opinion. I think it would help immediately. If we, he, he has three houses there, if we imposed, if he had to pay back the city for the 28 times the police department was there, for the however many times code enforcement responded, I mean, it would be in his best interest, I would think, really quick to either rent to somebody who's going to take care of those properties, maybe put a little money into the properties. But if he has to reimburse the city for those services, which is, in my opinion, fair, you know, I think he would have more incentive to do the right thing. I, I would not want to live on the block that Mr. Maples lives in. And so he, you know, like I said, it's, it's one more tool for us to, to try to deal with it.
Okay, I yield. Thank you.
I have Counselor Foster and Counselor Grant. That exhausts my list. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
I'm going to go back to the fees or the, the fines that we can give now. So we have a, my scenario is we have a owner in San Diego, and right now, we don't find them, because we only find ones in Chavas County. If we have this scenario, how are we going to, to send fees or, you know, charges to him any different than what we do now?
We'll do it through a lien on the property is what will happen. And I looked, I looked through the document, I can't find any place for fees or fines in there. We do use the word special charge, which I'm assuming is, is where we're at with that, but, and, and the idea, and I think Mr. Bartlett covered that a little bit as well too, is that our intent is to assess the call volume that occurs. And so if we, if we have to keep responding to that, then we're going to cover, recover our costs. And essentially, I believe, Mr. Holloman as well too, is that we would put a, place a lien on the property to collect if we couldn't because of that. That's the way, if we can't resell the individual in California or Texas, wherever, then we would actually put a lien on the property, and we'd go through the process through the lien to recollect our money.
Can we not do that with a fine?
Got to find the spot. No, you have to go through court and get a judgment before you can do a fine. Because it's a criminal penalty, so it's the end result of a criminal trial. So if you can't ever get somebody in front of the judge, that's where they have a hard time with somebody who's out of state or out of our community, to get them to come into Chavas County.
All right, well, I'll talk more into my mic or move it closer to me. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so the next, and Mr. Holloman and I have talked about this. How many liens do we have on properties now? We may not know exact amounts, but.
I don't, the biggest number I have on the top of my head is that for the past three years, excluding 2019, we had a quarter million dollars' worth of liens, and a lot of that, the only reason that I know that is because that's been one of the projects that I've had the deputy city attorney working on, is to recollect, file lawsuits, and try to collect on some of those liens.
And every time we file, how much does it cost us?
It costs us $197 to file.
And after, and we, oh, sorry.
But those costs are recoverable as part of the lien, recovery of the lien.
And then how long does a judgment last?
I think it's 10 years, but I'm not sure. What we have been doing, instead of letting a judgment, once we've got a judgment, we then file for foreclosure immediately. So that, that's the reason I don't know how long the judgment lasts, because we've been trying to foreclose those once we've got the judgments already.
Okay, because we've, I know on some that we actually ended up having to write off so many.
Oh.
So, that's, that's my question.
Right, if you don't file the lien, there is a statute of limitations on each of the liens. So if you don't file to, foreclose on that to get a judgment, then those can expire for four years.
All right, so that's, that's the, so, I mean, I understand there's a process. I, I do think though that if someone doesn't show up to court, I mean, you, that then we have fines that, but maybe if we can't file the liens or the, because of those fines, but it does answer some of those questions, but I still, it gets to, still to be, there's an inequality here that out-of-state owners get treated different than in-state owners, or in, you know, in Chavas, owners in Chavas County. So, I still think there's, there's a lot of work to be done with this. I, I do want to, I understand the police officers and code enforcement needing something like this, but I don't think that we should just put another ordinance on the books to put another ordinance on the books, because, like I said, we, you know, we had a very good reason why we, we put the curbing ordinance in, in for selling of cars, because we, we had, at the time, we had the Sandy Hook, or the, not Sandy Hook, but the, all the New Jersey flooding, and people were inundating. The cars had been flooded, and all kinds of good reasons why we, we put it in there. But we still now have just as many cars sitting on curbs, and I don't see permits on, on them. And so I, I hesitate to just add another ordinance to us that, that's a flawed ordinance, and I, I do see this still as flawed. Thank you. I yield.
I have Counselor Grant. That exhausts my list. Counselor Grant.
Well, I guess, I'm just trying to stop the bleeding here of what we're going to do here next, if we're going to do amendments, or, to me, it sounds like, in my view of sending it back to legal, to go through versus, we, we haven't really even gotten into amendments here, we've gotten into scenarios, and I think we're, I think most of us are in agreement, from what I'm hearing, is we like the concept or the idea in helping target these issues on problem owners, and not, obviously, we want to be sensitive to protect our good property owners. But I think this document, obviously, from what I'm gathering up here, is everyone agrees that there's issues with it. So I, that's why I would open it up, is what are we going to do here? Because I don't really want to talk about this for another hour or two.
I, I understand, and this is what I would propose to do. I don't know about the rest of you, but I will put together what we in legislature call a substitute bill. In other words, I would, I will, some of you have seen proposed changes I've shared. I will sit down, write up a substitute ordinance. I encourage any of you who wish to do the same to do the same. And then what I would propose is that, rather than send it to a committee, this is a matter that the whole council has to address, and I would suggest then that we act upon it in the April meeting, and we either say, we want the original version, we want substitute A, we want substitute B, we want substitute C, whatever, and then we vote and be done with it.
My only concern with that, Mayor, is I think it needs to be vetted in some sort of way, so we don't have this type of meeting again.
Okay, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I think there's a legitimacy to it. My concern is that if we go to, back to legal, anybody who has a serious interest in this needs to show up at legal and be part of that discussion then. Otherwise, we get to the council meeting, and I have heard, well, I wasn't on that committee, I wasn't part of that discussion.
Right, and I'm not saying it's going to be perfect coming out of legal, I'm just saying, I think going through some sort of vetting process, and I think we've all heard each other's comments, concerns, staff's comments, concerns, and, and take on it. And I think probably the legal, I don't even know who else is on the legal committee, but I think the legal committee is probably a lot more in tune with some of the issues probably with, with this document, and what we're trying to achieve is my, is my take from it. And anyone from legal can speak up if they don't agree, but that, that would be my take on it. I think they were treading on an area that, that we'd never really been before, and now I think they're probably a lot more educated and a lot more opinionated than before.
And Counselor Grant, if I could too, I, I think staff has appreciated the conversation. I know it's like pulling teeth for, for these conversations, but I'll tell you that they've enjoyed hearing the conversation as well too. And, yeah, they do. And, but, and I would agree, so, so the only action that you could not do, and I wanted to share the rest of this so that you understand that the parameters that you have to run on. We have scheduled a public hearing for the April 11th meeting to hear this. Any, you were going to, you can appeal, you can amend and everything else. If we're going to go back for a rewrite, we need to cancel that public hearing and pull it off the agenda. So that's the only thing I would make sure that you understand, because it is on the agenda for the public hearing at this time. And I believe the action, do we need to take an action to take that off, or do we just remove it?
Wait a second, has that agenda been published yet? No, okay, so.
Our biggest thing is that you've got to do the.
Have we published the public hearing though? Mayor, we have published the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
The agenda has not been completed, but the public hearing, it's a 10-day notice, I believe, so.
Okay.
So the public hearing went out before the, the agenda does.
Let me, then let's suggest this. We put it on the agenda, and we table it at the April 11th. I think that might be the cleanest way to deal with it, since it's already been published.
You can't just pull it off the agenda.
No, I, I, I think we would, Mr. Holloman.
It's your recommend, you know.
I mean, if, I think we could pull it off the agenda and maybe do a retraction in the newspaper on the public hearing, but that would be the only other option I could think of.
Here's what we, here's what we do. How about this idea? We, we go ahead and leave it on the agenda, we allow public comment, if anybody shows up and signs up to speak on it, but then we don't take any further action. The reason why I'm saying is, we've made the public notice, and we have an obligation, I think, to, to fulfill that. Now, and Mr. Robach, you want to get in on that?
No, that's okay. Yeah, just one thought is that, let, let's not commit ourselves to not take further action. I agree with, with Counselor Grant, however, if somebody does draft up a alternate version, like you said, and we do bring it there, and we do like it, let's not commit ourselves to not take action on it, if we're going to leave it on the agenda anyway. Now, I agree with Counselor Grant that probably the best procedure is to let it go back down to, to legal.
I, I would say though, that if we do substantial changes to the document from what has been published, we will need to hold a new public hearing anyway, if it's substantial changes.
Then I withdraw my.
And what I'm hearing are, what I'm hearing is, is that I, I don't think it's just a grammatical change of what we're looking at. It will be substantial, so I, I, you know, I, I think that our retraction would probably, we've done those before.
Okay.
A retraction is acceptable, I think, and then just go ahead and pull it off.
Ms. Call, did you want to jump in on this?
I do, I would like to say that normally, when I do the advertisements for the public hearing in the Rosary Daily Record, I try to get it on a Sunday. That's the day that I think they have the most circulation, and I believe I can have that in Sunday's, this coming Sunday's paper before the council meeting in order to have that retraction done for this ordinance.
Okay, then I'll go with that. If everyone else is, we're doing a retraction of the public hearing notice and removing it from the agenda for the April 11th. And then put it on the agenda for the next legal committee. Have we got, everybody, any objections to that? Okay, why don't you make that motion then, because I can't. Because I'm the presiding officer, I can't make a motion.
They don't want me to talk. Okay. Doesn't want me to talk. Okay.
Works.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'm going to move. I'm gonna say, let's see, first of all, I have to preface this. Uh, Mr. Mayor, considering the discussion that we have had on proposed ordinance 18 dash 11, I move to, what did you say, Sharon?
Retract the public hearing notice.
To, um, I'm so sorry, folks. Uh, to do, I, I move to do a retraction of, uh, the, of the publicity for ordinance. I don't know what I'm saying, 18 11, um, and, until it can go back to legal for further wording.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to retract the publication of a public hearing for proposed ordinance 18 11 and recommit the matter to the legal committee. Any further discussion on this proposed motion? Seeing none, I will ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of the proposed motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. Hearing none passes unanimously. Any further action on proposed ordinance 18 11 or any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to the second action item which I.
Mr. Mayor, before, uh, I did know.
We almost had it there, Counselor.
I know, I'm sorry. Uh, legal committee has been, it will be moved for April and I did just wanna make everybody aware of that right now. Um, I think right now it's scheduled for April 23rd, which is a Tuesday.
Okay.
At four o'clock, so.
Okay.
Don't, don't try to show up at, on Thursday.
Be, be there or be square.
Right.
All right, capital outlay. I asked for this be placed on the agenda, uh, because I wanna bring some, uh, uh, matters to your attention. I've had a discussion with most of you, but unfortunately not all, and I have not had an opportunity to, um, to do that. Uh, the governor has before her, uh, what's called the Senate Finance Committee Substitute for Senate Bill 280, generally referred to as capital outlay. Uh, the version before the governor for her signature includes five particular items for the city of Roswell. There are other items within the city limits, but they are not within the purview of the city, such as i- items at the, um, New Mexico Military Institute or at the Eastern New Mexico University of Roswell, the, the community college. The five items that are before us are the Lee Avenue and West Deming Street Bridge Construction in the amount of $800,000. Roswell Carpenter Park Improvements, $450,000. Roswell McBride, McBride Veteran Cemetery Improvement, $516,000. Roswell Water Systems Valves Replacements, $750,000. And South Main Street Improvements, uh, $783,250. The concern I have is that, uh, the city, myself in particular, and other staff received an email from the Department of Finance and Administration on two of these projects. Other, uh, follow-up questionnaires came, uh, from, I believe it was DOT on the other three. But DFA had questions about the project for Carpenter Park and the Veteran Cemetery. They wanted additional information on both these projects. We did not have a Carpenter Park splash pad project listed on our ICIP. Staff, if I'm not mistaken, has done no preliminary work in any way on doing the studies necessary to construct a splash pad. The Veteran Cemetery Improvements, we do have on our ICIP project list. That's the list we received on, um, February 1. We all got copies of. The total of all four of those assorted projects is 300,000 as opposed to 516,000. I literally do not know what the legislators intended us to spend 516,000 on. I have heard rumors about an additional entrance to South Park Cemetery. I have spoken to staff. I have talked to, uh, Mr. Escobell at the cemetery, superintendent. None of our staff have been approached or know of any proposed road new entrance to South Park Cemetery. And so, uh, there's not a form, Matt, that I can raise issues with you outside of a public meeting because we have quorum issue here. I do not intend to get into a long discussion. If anyone has any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them at this point. But I would like to urge the council to start considering how we can do, I believe, a better job as a governing body of communicating our needs and concerns to our legislators. I look upon you, the ten of you, as the council, as being the ones accountable to the citizens of this community. You are responsible for establishing the priorities for our staff on where things need to go. And y'all know my joke, I don't get a vote unless there's a tie. Counselor Stubbs says that's not funny. And, uh, so my desire here is to start you thinking about how we do this. And Counselor Orpesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am assuming, and I hate to assume, but the, the projects that you're talking about, especially the one that's not in the, uh, uh, the ICIP list. I, I guess an organization or somebody talked to, to the legislative team directly. And, uh, if, if I'm not mistaken, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, before these monies can be issued, they have to have a fiscal agent to take care of the money, right? And so it, it would, it would seem that we, the city and the county are the two fiscal agents here that would be able to take care of those kind of monies. Is, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. There, there will have to be a fiscal agent, um, which is generally another governmental entity responsible for how the money is expended. And, um, and, oh, there's, there's over 10.5 million dollars that were, that was provided for Chavez County and a lot of different uses. And so all of these projects that the, the mayor has alluded to as well too, all of those projects came from the city or had assistance from like the, the cemetery board, I believe is who assisted with the, the additional funds within the cemetery.
Well, as, as far as the cemetery board is concerned, you know, I, I've attended almost every single meeting that they've had and I don't recall them, uh, discussing this issue about, uh, getting more money for McBride. So I, I don't know if, if some individual took it upon themselves to, to go and talk or, or whatever. And, and even the, the, the road that the, the mayor has talked about has not been discussed at the cemetery board as well. But my, my, my thing is that if, if organizations are going to go directly to our legislative, uh, uh, members, they, they should know that before they do that, they have to, to come to the city or the county to be able to, to, uh, get a, an okay from, from them that they would be the, uh, the fiscal agent. And I think if, if, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, there was another one for the, the homeless that somebody went and, and.
Let, let me, let me, uh, address that if I may, Counselor, and clarify. Um, what you're alluding to is what's referred to as funding in what is generally called, uh, House Bill 2 Junior. Let me briefly summarize. The general appropriation bill that the legislature passes every year is always House Bill 2. And it deals with the operation of the entire state. This year, there was additional, uh, funds available, or the, the legislature determined there was, and packaged those in the last few days into two separate bills. One bill is the Senate Finance Committee Substitute for Senate Bill 536. The other one is the House Appropriation, uh, Finance Committee, uh, uh, Committee Substitute for House Bill 548. Those two bills contained additional outlays of money. However, they are appropriations to state departments for expenditures in our, in, in what we're talking about in our community. In other words, they're not funds that go through the city as a fiscal agent. And one example here is the, uh, Section 8A 7, uh, double I is a Department of Finance and Administration appropriation of $100,000 for, uh, police vehicles. The matter you particularly talked about is also a DFA, Department of Finance Administration Local Government, uh, Section 38B, uh, Paragraph 10, 82,000. Those appropriations from state, uh, are, are specific appropriations to be made by the state agencies for these entities. Now, the House Bill 2 Junior is a rare bird. It hasn't happened, Counselor Stubbs, in a number of years. Counselor Henderson, we talking five to seven years? More than that. So it's not a normal part of the process. And I, I don't, it's not an, it's a, it's a legitimate topic of discussion, but the matters I talked are specifically the capital outlay, which is an annual occurrence. And my apologies for interrupting.
And, and, well, just to, to, to be clear, then the, the homeless, uh, 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 monies are basically like the senior citizens, when, when they get money, they don't have to go through, through a fiscal agent? Is, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, the, there's funding for, uh, some seniors, uh, senior citizen event, uh, activities. And Aging and Long-Term Services Department is the fiscal agent, if you will, for those appropriations in House Bill 548. Not the city of Roswell. It's, now, how that is finally worked out, I am, the homeless was Department of Finance and Administration Local Government. I, my understanding is it's DFA will appropriate the money to an entity. I don't know who that entity is. I don't believe so, Counselor. We're kinda, we're breaking down here a little bit. Counselor Orpesa's got the floor.
Well, I'm just trying to, to understand because there, there's certain, uh, agencies like, like the senior citizens and, and some other ones that get direct money. And I don't know who the, the fiscal agent is. And, and I don't know whether the homeless, uh, monies, whether they went through the same processes as, as, as an individual agency or they are going to have, have to have a, a fiscal agent, whether it be us or it be the county.
I think you raise an excellent question. I know Mr. Neb and myself are both planning to attend in the Mexico Municipal League briefing on Thursday in Artesia. I will make it a point and Mr. Neb will remind me if I forget to try and get clarification on this very specific issue. Um, they're hopefully in a position to answer that question. If not, we will send an inquiry directly to DFA and ask them.
We did have, I did have a conversation with Hubert, with the Council of Governments and, and that one, he says, is, will, we haven't had, got a good answer yet on that one as to how they're gonna handle that. That one's a little more unusual to them, so.
And Mr. Mayor, ju- just, uh, to clarify something, uh, again, the, the, uh, the money that we got for Carpenter's Park, e- even though it was not on the ICIP list, as, as far as I understand, are, are, are we going to be able to, to get that money? Are, are, are they gonna, are they going to approve to, to send that money to the, the city or?
On, on that note, we have until noon on Friday to see whether the governor signs or line item vetoes. If she signs it and leaves that portion intact, staff will be preparing, uh, a plan for implementation of that. And that plan would have to come back to the governing body for approval.
Uh, every one of these items is not 100% coverage of what the project is. And so I know Mr. Nahar has, uh, went through and essentially filled in the gaps with what the cost of the estimate would be. So we're ready for whatever the governor decides on Friday, uh, as to coming back to the city council saying, this is how we would make this one work.
And, and I guess, uh, what I'm trying to, to say is even though it's not on the ICIP, uh, and, and let's say that the governor does sign the, the bill and we get the, what is it, $480,000 or?
450.
450.
Can, can we go back and, 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 uh, have that money reauthorized for another project that is on the ICIP?
We, we, we can ask our legislators to do that. That's the trick. We would have to ask legislators to do that in the next session, uh, which would be January of next year. That's a, that's an option. Uh, my understanding is all of the legislators that were involved in that, uh, in, in supporting that project need to be in concurrence with the reauthorization. That is my experience. But Counselor, you're, you're asking excellent questions. You have the floor.
What, what, what I'm basing it on is, is the, the money that we got for the Yucca Center.
Yep.
And, and I don't know whether we went back to the legislative, uh, or DFA when we asked for reauthorization of, of that money.
We specifically went back and asked our legislators. This was for those of you who were not, and there are few of you weren't involved in it. That appropriation was in the 2014, uh, legislative session, which was for FY15 money. We went back in January of 2015 and asked for reauthorization and we split it three ways. Some of that money went to the Boys and Girls Club structure. Some of that money became the original money for the engineering design and construction of the splash pad at Pocorn. And the third was the original engineering study work for the new recreation center.
Right.
So that, you're right, Counselor, that's exactly what was done with the 500,000. This, uh, and that was done, this body, uh, agreed to that request.
Right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have Counselor Foster wanted to get in there and then Counselor Stubbs and Counselor Henderson. Counselor Foster, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move closer. Um, Counselor Orpesa, one of the, the explanation on Carpenter Park was I went to our, one of our legislators to, to, for Chisholm Park, which is, is on our ICIP. And, um, that legislator had an idea of putting a splash pad or at a southern park. And Chisholm Park really wasn't, um, or the Chisholm site on South Virginia, we don't have a park there, we just have two, the acreage. And, um, and so, uh, so the idea was to possibly move it to Carpenter Park just because it was more viable for a splash pad. And, um, although at the time it was brought up that we didn't have it on our ICIP and it was a, a change. And so that's the, that's the difficulty that we have here is when we're dealing with the, our legislators, they also have their agendas and things they want for, for Roswell. And, and it does help to mesh. It wasn't, it wasn't the, the plan when I, when I talked to the legislator. And, and they knew that we didn't have it on our ICIP yet. They, that was their, I, that was their vision and, and who was I to say, no, we don't want a splash pad on the south part of town? You know, um. You know, so that's why we ended up with it sitting there and not on our ICIP. And why we're still sitting waiting for Friday to find out what the governor does. Thank you.
All right, I have Counselor Stubbs and Counselor Henderson, and then Counselor Grant. Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few clarifications because I wasn't correct. State statute says that the capital outlay money or any, well, let's just say the capital outlay money has to go to a political subdivision in that statute. So that's what I think we're referring to in the case that Counselor Opezza is referring to. The coalition is not a political subdivision, so.
But that's not, that's not capital outlay.
Oh, I thought that was. That's operations?
That's House Bill 2 Junior.
Oh, okay.
Which is not capital outlay. They talk to any legislator, they'll tell you that over and over again.
What?
That it's not capital outlay.
Okay, all right, all right.
But it's a different bird.
But, but nonetheless, I can recall two different situations where individual groups here in Roswell went to, I think in both cases it was to the governor because governor has a piece of the money as well. And the governor said, sure, this was two different years that, yeah, would appropriate through the governor's money to capital outlay projects, unknown to the city at the time. And both of those ended up being owned by a third party. Both were nonprofits, I guess. So what happened is one had to deed the property to the city. And the other, we ended up having to do the renovations that were requested in a city building as opposed to what the general or the original, do you know which one I'm talking about? The original requests from the organization. So they got kind of touchy. But I think the important thing is, is that they do have to go to political subdivisions in most cases, the capital outlay money. So my point being that it is the legislators' money to dole out that I think it would behoove us as a body, a governing body ourselves, to have some early on discussions with our legislators and maybe try to eliminate this kind of thing happening because we don't know what their priorities are. And it would be nice for us to know before we finalize our ICIP. And it would be nice for them to know what we prioritize ourselves. So I know it's a, there's current problem right now with these that you're mentioning. But I just think to help in the future, it would be nice if we were to implement a meeting of the minds so we know what's on their mind and they know what's on ours.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Henderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I've been at this 29 years and nothing's changed. I mean, we had the same problem back in 90. And we've, you know, we've gotten money for the Bird Sanctuary and because whatever reason, political reason, the governor vetoed that one. Number of years ago, we got $250,000 for a water park. And the water park certainly wasn't in any of the city's planning. So we actually lost that money. I guess the point is, is that we can do our planning, and I think we have done our planning on the ICIP. And we've made attempts to inform our legislators as to what we would like to see in capital outlay. But the crux of it is, is that the legislators are the ones that have the money and make the decisions. And if we can figure out a way to align ourselves, if something comes in that's not on our list but is on their list, if we can figure out a way to make that work, fine. If we try to reappropriate that money, we stand to lose it. So I think that we need to continue our efforts to let the legislators know what we would like to see. But I think we have to be realistic in knowing that they're going to choose the projects they like. And if they align themselves with us, so be it. But if they don't, then we get Carpenter Park.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Grant, and that exhausts my list. Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't it, wasn't it in December we finalized our ICIP list for like the second or third?
We did, we went back and we added the, another park and recreation project, the softball netting. We took off the asbestos water line in December.
Okay, so I have the two, I have the ICIP list. One was printed off from that meeting. And Carpenter Park's not on there.
Correct.
You mean Chisholm?
Chisholm Park.
Chisholm Park.
And so, but the one printed in February, Chisholm Park is on there.
Chisholm Park got added at the end of January.
Well, I mean, I'm on infrastructure, and I don't ever remember us talking about that.
It came essentially through a counselor from the legislature to the city.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's highly irresponsible, I believe, on our end to throw it on there if we don't have any planning. And then this is what we get sucked with where we pot, you know what I mean, we'll find out on Friday what happens, but then it gets put to a plan that we don't have a plan on.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that doesn't pass the smell test at all, especially as much as we, I remember, I recall that meeting being a pretty lengthy meeting that we talked about it and made some changes with some of the other stuff. I just find that highly unusual that we just added one on and mysteriously lobbied for it when it wasn't even discussed. Or on the list, honestly.
Okay. Now, let me, let me address it if I may. And I think the questions have been, well, let me say something, and then I'll come to you, okay? It's not my intention for this to become a dissension between us. We've all done efforts to get projects or funding for items. I am as guilty as any person. It's not on the capital outlay, but it's in the Senate version of House Bill 2 Junior, where it's the $100,000 for police car. I spoke to legislators. I said if there's additional money, because there'd been rumor there would be an additional House Bill, 2 Junior. There'd been rumor there would be one for a while. And my efforts there encouraging was to take pressure off of our general fund because we need to buy police vehicles. That was not a priority of this governing body. And that, I'm not, I'm not particularly thrilled with what I did. I think it was good for the city. But that's what's motivating my desire to have this conversation. I don't want to go out and act independent of the governing body's desires. I don't want us to act as a group of 10. I want us to be a body that says, this is where we want to go. I want us to work collaboratively. And that's a challenge. There's 10 of us. We all have different perspectives and different objectives and different priorities. We represent different parts of the city, legitimately so. And we strive for things in different parts of the city. Doesn't not mean we cannot come together collaboratively and speak with one voice with our legislators. That's the ultimate purpose. We're not going to accomplish that tonight. This is going to be a long dialogue. But to begin this dialogue, we have to have it in a format where I can, we can all speak to each other. In other words, where there's a quorum. We can't do that behind closed doors. We've got to have it in the open. And that is, my responsibility here is the desire to begin a discussion. I don't want to throw rocks at legislators. I don't want us to throw rocks at each others because candidly, rocks would come at me. I would deserve them. My intentions are good. As we all know, the road to Hades is paved with good intentions. But the objective here is to rectify my errors that I take responsibility for. Counselor Foster?
Now, I'm going to go back if we still have the audio for that December meeting because I was very specific that I wasn't going to vote for it unless we added the South Virginia park. And we got down to where we switched the five and put the netting as our number five priority. That, it was added, and it should have been added to it. But here was again.
We'll go back and check that.
And that's one of those things that upsets me is we changed something in a committee or in a meeting, and then suddenly it's not in our records.
Okay.
Because, well, because I know specifically that we sat down and, Joe or Mr. Neb, you were in the meeting where I said, how do we, how do we address this person in San Diego having to be here for, in five days to meet with you? And we changed it to contact. That's not in that draft that we had right now. I do specifically said I would not vote for the ICIP and in the meeting in December, unless we had that added for the South Virginia, just to be on our ICIP. And so it should have been on there. But for some reason, it didn't get added.
And I think we'll go back and look at that as well, too, because I believe that meeting was just to address the top five, and we amended the top five. I believe that was the motion. I know there, I think there was a conversation as well, too, on Chisholm Park or the Chisholm property becoming a park. But I don't, I don't know if I remember Council Action saying, yes, we're going to make this into that area. So we'll go back and look at that as well, too.
Okay. Counselor? Okay, where I want to go with this is I want you to encourage all you to discuss this with each other, discuss this with staff. Please share with me any concerns. My thinking is we strive to identify our priorities in August. And the reason why I pick August is it's after the budget is done. So staff has, and we have established what our revenue are and what our budgets are. But it's prior to that October timeframe when they want to see this up in the Legislative Council Service, LFC. Counselor Sanchez, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question for Mr. Nahar on these two items that they weren't on the ICIP. And I'd like to know how it's going to affect and the cost of, how's it going to affect if it's passed?
Okay, I'm assuming you're talking Carpenter Park and the Veterans?
Carpenter Park and Veterans.
Veteran Cemetery, I'm still unclear what the expectations are. But $516,000 is a lot of money, but I haven't seen the exact expectations. On Carpenter Park, based on my calculations and what I've already adjusted for my capital request out of engineering is $750,000. There'll be $450,000 that will be legislative money, and then $300,000 for the mere fact, go already gone onsite, where are we going to park everybody? And number two, we need a bathroom for the kids. If you remember when we did the first splash pad on West Second, the parking was already there. And the previous city manager said no to the bathroom. And now we have porta potties trying to learn from our mistakes. On my capital, on my budget item, it's going to be Carpenter Park, $450 legislative, $300 city funds. I hope that answers your question.
Where's the rest of the money coming from?
That's, my request is $300,000 city funds.
That would be, that'd be general?
You know, I'm in, I was under the understanding that we had the meeting for the five top ICIP items on there. All of us understood that. Why would we go a different route to get something that we're not even prepared to take on? That puts us in a bind. You know, we talked about the netting for the softball fields. And that's been an issue. And I don't know if we have placed that on the budget to, you know, for the new budget. I hope it's on there that we can deal with that.
We're just getting into the projects now for the budget.
Okay. But it just throws everything into a kind of like, now what do we do? We're trying to get things done here in the city now. And when something goes awry, then we have to, we don't have money because, because we're not in the same, on the same page. If we're going to have a list, let's stay with that list. Yes, we need to talk to legislators and let them know that what we'd like, but that they understand what else is, it's going to take to complete some of those things. It's the communication on that.
And I think I'll just go back and just go on off of what Counselor Stubbs and Counselor Henderson did and what Mayor Kentai is. We also talked about bringing our legislators in also to have a one-on-one conversation with our legislators. I think everybody has different conversations with them. But I think with, going back to what Counselor Henderson said is that we do have a disconnect between what the legislators want and what the city wants. And I think we can match up pretty closely. The challenge we have is that we're just, we weren't ready. Are we ready to take on the ongoing expenses of a, of a project? Are, you know, because that's an ongoing process. Are we ready to replace it if it goes obsolete? And I think those are the conversations we need to have. I like the August date, we talked about that today as well, too. August seems to be a really good time that we keep beating up that list to make sure it meets what your expectations are. And then we use that list to have a conversation with our legislators before they get into the rat race up in Santa Fe because I think that's where it all kind of changes, so.
I have Counselor Best, Counselor, you still have the floor, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, probably the legislator doesn't know that it's going to cost us more now if it's passed in order to be able to accomplish this.
I know through the discussions, that number changed a little bit as well, too. It went down from what, what was the preliminary number, I think, so.
Counselor, Sanchez, you done? Counselor? Okay, I have Counselor Best, and that exhausts my list.
Okay, I'm sure that Judy and a lot of the others that have already been here, when I started in 2012, we did have a sit down with the legislation before they went up. I remember that. They may not have shown up. And they may not have given their ideas to us. But again, since I've been here, and I'm sure it's been a long time coming, this city is disconnected from the county, from the school system, and from the legislative, period. That's why our water system and infrastructure is so trashed. That's why we're behind on things for the kids to do. We are a major disconnect. I think August is a perfect time for the city council to get together and make sure the ICIP is what we want. I think we need to send letters to our legislators from the city to them and ask them what they want for the city. See what they send back to us, if they send anything. And then have a workshop with them. Make sure we have water, beer, whatever it takes to get the legislative here because they're in that world in Santa Fe. And tell them they need to pay attention to their constituents. Their constituents come through us as a city council. Get the county to join us and have one big workshop. Because I believe the county gets ICIP, too. Am I correct?
Capital outlay, yes.
Capital outlay, whatever the case may be. But we all need to play in the same playpen. We can't keep tugging a war with each other.
Counselor Opezza, that exhausts my list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think Counselor Sanchez brings up a good point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think Counselor Sanchez brings up a good point. Because again, we start projects, and we don't finish the projects. They linger out there, because the money's not there, and what have you. And the fact that a legislator believes in providing funding for a certain project, without even knowing how much that total project is going to cost, and maybe they don't understand that we need $300,000 to finish the project that was started back in 2013, or 2012, or whatever the year that was, for the softball fields. And I think that's, that's the important issue that we need to relate to the legislators. Yeah, you may want something, a project that you are willing to support. However, that's not a project that we need. We need to finish this other project that we started way back when. And then, we'll look at the other projects for the next year, or whatever. But I think it puts us in a bind, when we have to accept the projects that legislators want us to have, without knowing the repercussions as far as the money is concerned, whether we have the money to finish that project or not. Or are we just going to get the money that they are willing to give us, and start it, and perhaps not even go halfway with it? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I have no one else on my list. And so, like I said at the beginning of this portion, my objective here tonight was for us to begin the conversation, and begin thinking about how we want to try and address this problem. Not a new problem, as Counselor Henderson has very eloquently stated. It's not new. Just because it's not new, doesn't mean we don't need to try and seek a solution. And that's my objective. Once again, it's not my objective here, nor should we try to go through and say, well, so-and-so did this, and so-and-so did that. I don't want to go in the past. I want us to go forward. Let's discuss and come up with a mechanism to try and work collaboratively with ourselves, the county, as Counselor Best puts forward, and with our legislators, as Counselor Sanchez and Counselor Opeza have said. Maybe I'm a little naive there, but I will, I would like to see us pursue that. And that's all I have. Yep, we're done for me. Mr. Neb, I believe there's an agenda item that has to do with your 42-slide presentation. Is that correct?
I intend to not punish you any farther tonight. Just to notice that we do have a public forum on April 18th. It'll be in this building. It is on operations. So we'll be talking about all of our projects, our enterprise funds, and all of that with the public. So you're all invited to attend that. So thank you again for tonight. We appreciate it.
All right. Unless there's some other pressing matter? Public participation.
Thank you.
I don't think you signed up. You didn't sign up.
Oh, that didn't lie.
Larry Conley, 2815 Encanto Boulevard. There are three things I'd like to discuss. One, Carpenter Park, and, or Chisholm Park, Carpenter Park. I was in one meeting of a committee that was discussed, and the main thing came up was, if I remember right, Carpenter Park, Chisholm Park, wasn't big enough to do a splash pad. And Carpenter Park was kind of, came up, because people who lived on that side of the highway wanted to have something. They didn't want kids running across South Main. That's number one, okay? Number two, Jeanne Gordon, best idea about meeting with the county, the state legislature workshop, that should be a must. And it could be done very easy. And then three, the ordinance, the beginning, Mr. Maples. That's the first time that this whole thing about landlord has come up, really, this particular landlord, who I happen to know. But there's civic, maybe some people can write letters to the editor, get this out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Conley. By my clock, we are at 9:02. No further matters. We are adjourned.